Uh, I speak council and read off here. So the time is six o'clock P M. Uh, we're gonna ask that everyone please turn your devices off or place them on mute so that we can begin our council meeting. Please remember to place your devices on mute or turn them off so you won't have any distractions as we conduct the business of the people of Selma, Alabama. Welcome to the Selma City Council. This meeting is hereby called to order. Uh, at this time, we're going to ask Councilman Carmichael to please offer us a word of notification.
Good night. Hereon, thank you for the support we see we have, thank you for all the citizens that we have. We ask that we keep both safe and help the council and the mayor get along in the right way and the best that are your side and trusted.
Hey, thank you. Let us all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Your Majesty. See you. At this time, we're gonna ask that our clerk, Mrs. Harrison, please offer our roll call.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Young.
President.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
President.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
President.
Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Randolph.
President.
Councilwoman Jimison. Councilwoman Thomas James.
President.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yeah. Thank you very much. The character trait of the month is ambition. Ambition is the path to success. Persistence is the vehicle you arrive in. Uh, council, you have before you the agenda for the evening. Uh, we do have two items that were not placed on the agenda that should have been, and that is, we have Mr. LaMarcus Snow under announcements. He's gonna be here to talk about an event. And we also have with us Auburn University, the Auburn families here to offer a presentation. So that's gonna be under our announcements section. Uh, with that said, council, after having the opportunity to review this agenda that is before you, uh, what is the pleasure of this body?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please allow the minutes to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson and promptly seconded by Councilman Carmichael to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimison. Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And council, you should have before you the consent agenda for Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. There are a total of nine items on the consent agenda. I will read all of them and then we will discuss. The first item, to approve the advertising posting of the treasurer position for two weeks, starting July fourteenth through July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Number two, to approve creating a special committee for economic development with members being Councilwoman Janie Thomas, Councilman Clay Carmichael, and Councilman Atkins Jimison. Number three, to approve a budget adjustment for the recreation department from unused salaries in the recreation department budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The sum of fifty thousand dollars will be transferred from account one point six six zero zero dash five two one zero zero to account one point six six zero dash five one eight five zero. And seventy-five thousand dollars is to be transferred to account one point six six zero zero dash five one zero five five. Number four, to approve resolution R one fifty-four dash twenty slash twenty-one, authorization for application to apply to S L F R F through the American Rescue Plan with an effective date of July the sixth, twenty twenty-one. Number five, to approve a contract for services with Roosevelt Goldsby beginning June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through September the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of five thousand dollars, with funding being dispersed from account number one point six zero one one point five one zero zero five. Number six, to approve a contract for services with N P G L L C for consulting services as a community liaison in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, starting July fifteenth through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with funds being dispersed from the unappropriated account. Item number seven, to approve resolution R one twenty-five dash twenty dash twenty-one, request for declaration of emergency status at municipal stating to accomplish repairs and sanitation by Hurricane Zeta. Item number eight, to approve resolution R one fifty-eight dash twenty slash twenty-one for community services to allow snows cleaning service to volunteer service on city properties. And item number nine, to approve a purchase order in the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and twelve cents for the fire department to purchase nine air packs and harnesses. This is our consent agenda that has been presented for the council. At this time, do we have any questions?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Janie Thomas, and then we'll go to Councilman Johnson.
I would like to pull item seven off further.
Yes, ma'am, all right. Yes, Councilman Johnson. All right. Council, interview, hear your lines. Yes, ma'am.
I don't wanna pull in number eight, but I just, in the near future, I wanna add something to that, uh, to about all the citizens. Still the one, uh, still the Mr. Snow to clean up if they want to clean up at the cemetery.
Oh, item number eight?
Yeah.
Okay, but you don't wanna take it off?
No, I just wanna take it off, but I'm just saying, I, I just wanna, in the near future, come back again and just, right here in the city.
Certainly, all right. All right, so council, we have removed our items number six and number seven from our consent agenda. Are any others? Any others? With that said, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the adoption of the consent agenda for Tuesday, July thirteenth? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please allow the minutes to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson and promptly seconded by Councilman Carmichael to approve consent items number one, two, three, four, five, eight, and nine. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for the roll call, and thank you, council, for your votes. Now we will move on to the next items on our agenda, which is the approval of the council meeting minutes, and our clerk will perform that item for us. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, council, again, and all who are present. Council, you should have before you the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, special call meeting minutes, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, special call meeting minutes, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and special call meeting minutes, July first, twenty twenty-one. These minutes are before you for your consideration and approval.
All right. Council, the clerk has indicated that we have minutes from several meetings before us for our approval. Uh, and that's gonna be the June seventeenth special call meeting, the June twenty-second city council meeting, and the June twenty-fourth special call meeting. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the adoption of said minutes?
To move.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Councilwoman Janie Thomas and promptly seconded by Councilman Michael Johnson to approve the minutes for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and also June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Are we ready for the question, council? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, council, for your votes, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we will have our announcements portion, uh, of the, um, of our meeting, and we did have Auburn University on the agenda, so I'm glad about it. So, at this time, we're gonna call for, uh, something Auburn's gonna take a little bit longer than some of the others. If the council doesn't have any disagreement, we'll take the other items and then move on. So let's first have, uh, Mr. Leif Wilson here to discuss the virtual leadership now, Boy Scouts. Mr. Leif Wilson. Is Mr. Wilson. Calling Mr. Wilson one more time. I think we asked three times, uh, we hope to see Mr. Wilson in the future. Uh, the next item on our agenda for announcements, and that's gonna be Mr. LaMarcus Snow. And Mr. Snow is here to tell us about an upcoming event. So, Mr. Snow, you have the floor.
How everybody doing?
All right.
I'm the mayor of the city council, uh, president of council. Uh, I'm having none of y'all, you know, being on Saturday, uh, July the seventeenth at my, uh, at my property, twenty-four one Church Street. If, hey, if everybody, I'm asking all the judicial leaders come out there if they not doing anything. I'm not asking to borrow no tables, no chairs, ain't nobody gotta pay for no food, everything on me. If you, if you wanna come, you welcome. I got some flowers, I got some flowers for it. Uh, and I also grabbed everybody some masks if you wanna, well, I got, I don't got everybody, so I got seventeen, it's, I got Brown Chapel on one side and, uh, the bridge on the other side. And it's like fifteen or sixteen more in there. If you, if you come, if you don't come, uh, you still can get one. They wouldn't, I only paid seven dollars for them, so it ain't no violation in there. I'm, I'm sure everybody can receive something for seven dollars. So, there's some nice masks, it's gonna be a nice event. I'm gonna have security out there. All y'all, special gifts.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
That's all.
Oh, Mr. Snow, before, this is true. Uh, Mr. Snow, before you leave, uh, on tonight's consent agenda, this council did vote to approve a resolution, uh, indicating, uh, resolution R one fifty-eight dash twenty slash twenty-one for community services to allow snows cleaning service to volunteer service on city property. So let us all do this. And I believe that will be good to you at another time, but we did adopt that. And, Mr. Snow, I'd say at the work session on Thursday, I would be there, but I'm going to be out of town.
Yes, sir.
But I'm sure you're gonna be on Facebook.
Yes, sir. I, I appreciate that, uh, all the services I try to do around here is to, to help the city of Selma look a little better. I talked with the mayor the other day, uh, the problem with me and Mr. Wells' cemetery director. We got that, we got that settled the other day, we shook hands, that's small. And, you know, y'all gave the resolution, and the mayor also, you know, told me, you know, I can start that helping, so.
Very good, very good.
All right.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. All right, uh, now, I think, uh, let me ask for Mr. Wilson one more time, is Mr. Wilson here? Mr. Leif Wilson. Mr. Leif Wilson, all right? Since we don't have Mr. Wilson, now we'll go to Auburn University, and Mr. Keith Hibbert, you do have the floor, sir.
You're members of the Selma City Council and citizens of Selma. On behalf of Auburn University, I'm really thankful that you've invited us to be here today and allow us to speak for you. Really here to share a really exciting, uh, project that we have going on for the past five years. Uh, we've been working with Alabama State University and Selma High School and other folks in the area like the National Park Service.
Yes, ma'am. The microphone, I think, somebody, I think, over here, you, oh, yeah.
Is that the thing?
Yes.
I'm blind as a bat, Madam Clerk. Well, I wanna thank all of y'all again for inviting us to report this. Um, you know, tonight, what we're gonna showcase is some of the work that Auburn University, Alabama State University, and Selma High School is working together on a really interesting project to document, uh, some of the rich history of Selma and share it broadly across the world with folks. Um, you know, what we're ultimately trying to do, at least with this first, uh, big initiative, big push, is during the fall of this year, what we really wanna do is we've discovered thousands and thousands and thousands of photographs, uh, taken during the Bloody Sunday incidents in Selma. And we're trying to put a name to every one of the faces in those photographs, you know, six hundred plus marchers that are there. And, uh, the folks that are gonna talk to us, are gonna show some of what we're doing to do some of this and some of the other parts of this project. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Robert White of Alabama State University to kind of kick things off for us and kind of tell a little bit about sort of the foundations of what we're doing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Selma City Council, to my good friend, Mayor Percy, it's good to be here, uh, with you. I've taught at Alabama State University for twenty-eight years, I taught African-American mandate in this constitutional law. And, uh, we, my research team and I, we frequent the Black Belt. We teach at high schools, we teach at middle schools, we teach, uh, for different groups that invite us to come. And, uh, we have been working in the Black Belt very diligently to research, uh, civil rights history. Uh, we've accumulated a lot of pictures, a lot of interviews, uh, hundreds of hours of interviews that we've done with people, and we're chronicling it, uh, to do different things with it. Number one, we wanna teach the history to young people, because we believe that, uh, a lot of the problems that our young people are having is due to the fact that they don't know their history. So we wanna codify it, we also wanna own it, which means that the narrative that we present is not a narrative that's skewed or slanted in a particular, uh, direction, but we're being objective as possible to tell the facts as they are. We've already, uh, published, uh, several books on the subject, uh, and we use the Highway Eighty theme. It's called Highway Eighty, March Through Alabama Civil Rights Corridor. And what we're pushing to do, and you'll see, uh, in just a minute, what we wanna do is we wanna bring maximum attention to the civil rights movement and make Montgomery and Selma the epicenters when it's time to talk about civil rights in the country. We want Montgomery and Selma to be the primary areas of focus, because our research shows that economically, if these two places are built up to their highest potential, the entire Black Belt, which actually extends from Georgia all the way to Texas, would benefit from it in a major way. So we wanna link businesses, link institutions of higher learning, uh, all educational institutions into really one grid, so we all can work together to take advantage of this massive, massive amount of information that we have. I have with me two friends, uh, that I want to, uh, introduce. Uh, Kevin King, if you're in Montgomery and you're downtown and you see those murals that are downtown that are being painted, he painted, uh, most of those murals in his organization. Uh, is responsible for that. We also have Amber Bond, who is a consultant with us, uh, with our research group, and she wants to raise the culinary awareness in the Black Belt, which means teach people how to cook and, uh, teach our young people, uh, how to use the culinary arts, uh, to better themselves. So I'm gonna turn it over now to, uh, Dr. Burke, who has an awesome presentation, which max, which, you know, gives us just a little teaser of what it is that we're doing. Uh, we've developed a teaching tool called Civil Rights G I S. And what we're doing is we're using global information systems, geographic information systems, to tell the story of civil rights. So when he pulls up, uh, the video, you're gonna see a video footage montage that he put together, and you're also gonna see some other images to where we're using this technology to tell the story of civil rights, to go back in time and see what did the topography look like, what did the city look like back then? And we're using the testimony of the subjects that we interviewed to paint this picture. So it'll be done in the, in the way that the people, uh, have stated. So I'm gonna call, uh, Dr. Burke now, and I wanna thank you all for your time. Please call me if you need me, that's Alabama State University, where Honorable Quentin Ross is our president. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Bond. I think I better say a few words first, so to make sure that everyone can understand me through this mask and with my accent. Can, can everyone understand? Excellent. Um, Jin Chen, if you could put the next slide up. Um, so while you're looking at, at this site, um, I'll tell you how I got started on this project. When I came to Alabama from Texas, I've done several research projects on some very famous battlefield sites, and I was very keen to, um, visit Selma and see how the site had been interpreted. I was kind of shocked to see there was very, very little interpretation there for what I think is probably the most significant battle site or conflict site in the United States. It's got a worldwide reputation, it's extremely important and significant. So we believe it deserves the same attention as many of the other sites that people have done studies on. Next slide. When we started looking at the site, we found, and, and some of you will say, well, that's not the conflict site, the conflict site's the bridge. The bridge is not where the conflict occurred. The conflict occurred, um, pretty close to where what was within Hastings, uh, store was. But we found that there's been some changes to the highway structure, a lot of the signs, um, and advertisers disappeared, but many of the buildings still survive, many have been replaced. Um, and, but if you go there, it is very difficult to understand what happened with the events there. There's very little signage there, very little interpretation there. And visitors have very little context of what happened there, because she got two events occurred there. You had the Bloody Sunday conflict, and then turnaround Tuesday, which happened, uh, a little bit further down outside the curb market. And I hate to say it, the, the twenty fifteen Selma movie has not helped with that in any way because, um, of the locations that they chose. Next slide. So, like I said, and Keith said, we've been working on this for, for almost five years now, collecting materials, doing surveys of the site, analyzing data. We've submitted some grants already to try and do additional work there, one of which we've been successful, and I'll show you some results of that. Some of the publicity that we, we've developed, um, has been picked up on by CNN, some of you might have seen. That's allowed us to do some other civil rights projects around the state, some Rosenwald schools, schools. We looked at the, um, First Missionary Baptist Church, the site of the birth of the Black Panthers in Haynesville, and we've even visited Camp Site One to do some initial studies there. Jin Chen? So what we're doing is we're, we're using some of the equipment that we have at Auburn to survey the site, um, scanning and using token stations. Next slide. This is a laser scan of the Pettis Bridge, and this is a three D model that we did as part of a grant that we got from the National Park Service. What we're trying to do is try and recreate what the site looked like in nineteen sixty-five, and the only way we can do that is to analyze historic photographs. We believe we've probably got now the most extensive set of photographs that were taken on Bloody Sunday than anyone has. And we've had to collect these from archives, not just around the state, but in Texas. Um, we've also got requests in the National Archive in Washington as well. But it has allowed us to produce what we think is the first sort of accurate reconstruction of what the site looked like on that day. Next slide. So this is a sort of, this is a poster that we did for a research exhibition, sort of shows the overall site. We've been able to get it to, to, to show buildings that weren't there, where advertising, um, hallings were, even down, I hope you can see that, even down to where cars were, because the vehicles, the state troopers' vehicles particularly, are a very important part of what happened on those events. And as you can see, we've got, we've used photography to do this, um, and analysis of photography to get, to get dimensional data. And what we've been able to find out through analyzing photographs, analyzing movies, is that the conflict, um, where most of, most of the images that, that I saw growing up in the U K that were shown on the, you know, the Eyes, the Eyes on the Prize, um, documentary, which shows the conflict of, of being maybe about a minute duration, actually plays out for the best part of seven minutes, where there is a, a forward push, a retreat by the state troopers, uh, a sort of lull in, in, in activities, and then the, the troopers advancing for a second time. And it really makes the events that occurred there on Bloody Sunday much, much more complicated than what I think most people realize happened. And again, that leads to a much more detailed story that can be told about the events that occurred there. One of the things, as, as we were putting these drawings together was, well, we're gonna name all the individuals that were there, and I'm not an historian, I'm, I'm a surveyor. Keith's an historian. I went to Keith and said, give me the list of everyone that marched on Bloody Sunday, because I thought there's gonna be a list, there has to be a list. Um, he said, well, I don't know where one is. And everyone we've asked, where's the list of the people that marched on Bloody Sunday? And we can't find it. So I started doing this, I started putting numbers together, and I don't like doing that. I think it's incredibly disrespectful. Um, we know some of the more famous people, like John Lewis, Isaiah Williams, Amelia Boynton, Charles Morden, who, who I met, um, a few weeks ago. But the vast majority of people, we know some names, but we don't, we haven't put, been able to put, uh, names to faces. So we've gone through the literature, we've gone through the FBI files, and we've developed a list of about a hundred and fifty potential names. And we identified at least the first hundred and twenty marchers by number. And we've been able to do that because of the, basically, the photographs that we have already. The photographs that we have currently on order from the University of Texas and from Alabama Law Enforcement are all taken around the back of Brown's Chapel when the, the march was forming up. So we should be able to, um, identify at least by number most of the marchers. And what we're planning to do is to do, uh, that at an honest class at Auburn this fall and working with, uh, a teacher, Veronica Pitts, at, at Selma High School, to, um, try and identify as many of those, those marchers as we can. So I'm gonna hand it over to, back to Keith and, and Robert to talk a little bit about what, what we would like the council to sort of assist us with.
Robert? Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna hand these around, these are some of the more blown up images of, uh, you know, from some of the photo archives of where we've been able to find photographic images from that day. Do you tell, here we've, you know, numbered a lot of folks on here. Our ultimate goal is to, number one, place names with faces, but also create a digital tool that'll be accessible around the world, where people will be able to explore this site and connect not just who these people's names were, but their stories as well. Um, you know, a lot of this stuff, as y'all know, is out there. A lot of people have talked about and raved about Bloody Sunday, no doubt. Uh, but what we really struggle to find is sort of this comprehensive sort of everything put together, you know, into a complete site. So let me, so I can see how it would look like. Um, the big challenge for us is, uh, as Richard said, in the fall, we're gonna do a class, uh, and actually, it's gonna be in the fall and spring as well, but we're gonna be working with, uh, Veronica Pitts over at Selma High School. Uh, she has some special classes that she's gonna do on, uh, civil rights history and so forth, so she's gonna, uh, work with our students and actually work with her students to, uh, get out in the community. And ideally, what we wanna do is host a series of, what we call sort of harvest days, like history harvest days, like show and tell kind of days, where we, um, come into the community, hopefully at like Selma High School, uh, we bring these photographs and images that we have, and through our networking with the community, we have folks come in that day who can help us identify these folks, you know, can tell us these stories, and we can record these stories. And none of this is stuff that we wanna own, this is for the people of Selma, this is for the people of Alabama. That's why I wanna do this. This is not something all of you, this is just something we're very interested in doing and committed to doing. But that's where we need your help, um, the most. We need help, um, you know, number one, promoting and sort of advertising that this is something that's going on. Um, all of you in the room right now, some thinking like, I know people, you know, I know folks, and that's what we need, you know, we need that. And we need to connect what you know with these images and with this project, so that it gets kind of archived forever for posterity, you know, for, for people to be able to share this into the future. And so that's a big part, just getting awareness, but also helping us as we host these events, you know, promote that, and talk about it in the community, and help us get the word out that we are looking for these folks. And sometimes, maybe, yeah, there's folks that could come down to the high school and help us out on a Saturday or something. And sometimes maybe there's folks that could come down to the high school and help us out, or on a Saturday or something, or on a Wednesday, whatever it may be. In other cases, it's going to be like, hey, I know some folks you need to go out and talk to, you know, they can't get out. They can't, you know, we want to do all of that. You know, we've got a team, we're going to have during the fall semester at least, between our two different schools working together, about 25 really highly engaged students. And about 10 faculty working on this. So we really want to get out and try to document as much of this as we possibly can.
And this is a labor of love for us. I'm a pastor as well. And, you know, we would not have the Bible that we have today without Ezra and Nehemiah. And what they did was they codified a lot of what we have now, which is the Old Testament. And y'all, I'm just going to tell you, there's a lot of work to be done. Because in my opinion, my qualified opinion, our history hasn't been properly taught. And it has not been properly told. And I think it is our generational responsibility to codify our history, present it to the world as interpreted by us, for us. And I can also express to you the amount of attention and interest that other people have had in this project. But we want the people of Selma to get first dibs on everything that we do. We want high school students, middle school students, elementary students involved, hands-on with what we do. Because we can teach them technology, we can teach them the technology on how to do what it is that we do. They can get firsthand research experience with us because we're in the field. And then at the same time, we're studying history that is relevant to them. And I was speaking in Montgomery, and it was an event that where we had prepared with little kids. And one of the kids asked me what I did. I said, I teach at Alabama State. Well, what do you teach? I teach history. And I wrote a book on bus boycott. And she was like, oh, so you wrote a book on my great aunt? Yeah, her great aunt was Mary Louise Smith, sitting right next to me. And then she said this, you want to talk to her? Hey Auntie, I got somebody that wants to talk to you. And I'm sitting there, I'm like, you know, and so our history's right here. And as councilperson said, that many of the people, some of the people need to talk to in this very room. But we need your input, we need your contribution, and we want you to own this. Another thing that we're looking for is we would like for the council to assign us a liaison so we can work directly with that person to give the council and the mayor's office updates on what it is that we're doing. And I think if you have business people in the room, I think your wheel should be turning right now. Because wherever our research goes, dollars follow. And tourism is a multi-billion dollar industry. And so what we're doing is, we're actually laying the groundwork for the major tourism, which is sure to follow. So we think this is a win-win for Auburn, a win-win for Alabama State University. Of course, we've got some alumni in the room, and this is a win-win for the people of Selma. So please invite us back, because we want Dr. Burke to show a little bit of the video. So please inquire about the video, say, hey Doc, how can we get it to show us the video? Because the video is critical to us moving forward, we don't have time to do that. But we want to thank the council for your time, the mayor for your time. And I think if you have any questions, we can entertain any questions that you might have. First of all, let's thank the man for the presentation. Excellent presentation. At this time, council, are there, do you have a few questions you can keep it brief? Are there any questions that you have for this team about what they are trying to do to help us tell this story? All right, any questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you because we should just present it and work it back.
White, yes, sir.
What does White say? A lot of our elementary, our kids that are growing up, they don't know the history of it. And it's good that you bring it before the body of the council. So, oh, those two break, and I do that, we do need to educate our young people on the history.
Yes, ma'am. Excellent. Are there any other candidates, county councils? I just want to add, it is extraordinary that you all are taking on an effort like this to have a comprehensive story. As a student of history, through the years, I watched documentaries, we watched the movie that was performed. We watched other things, we watched how people tell our story. But we haven't had this comprehensive model told by us. You know, you can always complain about somebody else telling your story, but it's up to you to tell your story. So we thank you for offering your assistance in us telling our story. And those things that you ask for the city council, I believe those are definitely doable. And we will put you on some subsequent agenda in the future to further discuss, but we thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you. All right, I think I saw Mr. Wilson come in. Mr. Keith Wilson, he's here to talk to us about boys' camps.
Well, good evening and thank you for this opportunity to come and speak before you. And a real opportunity for me to thank you for your involvement and support of our Adventure Leadership Camp. I know Mr. James has circulated a sponsorship form and asked about getting sponsorship for it. We had a good camp, it took place June the 28th through July the 2nd. And wish we'd had more members, more participants, which I think what we did this year will help build a foundation for next year. We had a lot of our students who could not attend because of summer school. I got that in several different locations that, when we were trying to get, you know, signups for our camp this year. But now the city council has been involved each year that we've done the camp, starting back in 2015 when we first started. And I was working with Chief Riley and the city council at that time to make Adventure Leadership Camp an environment where our students would be exposed and, you know, kind of mentored somewhat by our police officers and law enforcement so that they would see law enforcement as real people. And they would get to ask questions that you don't get to ask unless you have a friend that's in law enforcement. And we had some really good questions this year. We had officers from Alia come and present the Fatal Vision. If you've never had that involvement, that's the four, the side by side, kind of a four-wheeler, a modified go-kart type of situation where they put the drunk-driving goggles on and they get to experience what it is to be impaired without being drunk. And so our young people did that. They talked about the, you know, not drinking and driving and, you know, the fatalities that go along with that. And we also had an officer from Marine Division from Alia come and talk about boat safety, water safety. You know, it's a tragedy anytime that we have injuries on the water and fatalities, you know, that we're, our children need to know how to swim. And that's one thing that we try to teach at this camp. If there's any member, any of our campers that don't know how to swim, we try to work with them, the first step, second step, trying to get them to not be afraid of the water, to know their limitations, and also to start learning how to swim. So try to overcome that. And we had members of the Prakel and Montgomery Police Department were in attendance this year. Unfortunately, we did not get to have the attendance from our Selma police. And Sergeant Blanks was, has been involved every year that we've had the camp until this year. And so we look forward to working with him and the chief and see if we can get everything organized next year to have their involvement back again. But, so really I'm saying thank you. I know, I don't know what the total was when Ms. James was sending the sponsorship around. But we're trying to finish that up and we appreciate your support. And let you know that scouting is active, we've had a busy summer, summer camps for all of our age groups during the month of June. I just returned Sunday night late from taking a group to Northern Tier, which is our canoe base in the northeast corner of Minnesota. I'd never been to the North Woods before, I have a different appreciation for that area now that I've seen it. And we canoed a bunch of different lakes in the Boundary Waters. Places that you can't go unless you canoe. You can hike, you can canoe, but you can't get there by motorboat. So it was a lot of fun, very challenging for our young people that went. And looking forward to a group going to Philmont next summer and other activities that we'll be doing. We'll also have, as we move into the fall, the schools starting back with the blessing of our superintendents, getting back into our schools with our Scout Reach program and the seven, eight, eight different schools that we've been working on that and trying to, you know, involve more young people in good citizenship and ethical decision-making.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any comments for the councilman Tom?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I see a district mayor's seat. She's here for the boy scouts.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
You know, I like being a part of and giving, but under the selective reading, it require of us as we give in our district mayor that it should be where a contract where we give our funds to support the boy scouts. So I want to do it right because I want to be a part of this. And I just don't want to do, I want to do what's right. So could our attorney, Attorney Madison?
And that's what I was going to do, the question was, I was going to refer to, may I, the council attorney Madison to draft the appropriate contract for approval.
And that's why I wanted, because I didn't want to sign yet to he,
Yes, ma'am.
so we can make sure that we are doing it according to other of the laws required to give a boy scout.
Yes, I believe Mr. Wilson, we all want to participate in the group, right? And we'll get back to the attorney and get something that I sent.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Councilman Tom.
Yeah, they'll take an application, young kids.
We did, and some of our shortfalls, then I think then we need more ways to get the applications out. And one of those was to go to the schools and through the counselors to ask them to nominate or select students and give them forms. And we got, we just didn't get very many of that.
So how can I, is that a website or online?
Well, what I do is work with the group and make sure that a application is in y'all's hands early next year, in '22. So that we'll have that. And I'm open to other ideas of how to get more students involved in this.
So y'all meet on regular basis, y'all just meet just for camp?
Well, this particular camp was not necessarily scouts. It didn't have to be a scout already. They were more of, it was more of an outreach, so it was involving students that may or may not be involved in scouting. And we were going through the schools and through the counselors and trying to find those applicants. But, you know, any thoughts on that? I'd love to talk with you and be able to find out ways to get the word out and fill this camp up. Because I think it's true, what was shared at that camp and very well could save someone's life as well as, you know, inspiring them to do new things, better things.
That's why I'm asking, because there's a lot of kids I didn't know have nothing to do. Some program like Cub Scout, I was a Cub Scout, or I've become a Boy Scout. And we used to meet weekly, every two weeks. And I'm just trying to see if there are any Boy Scout or Cub Scout going on now, like on a regular. I know the pandemic probably slowed off people down.
It did slow things way down, and for a period of time there was no meetings. But yes, there are Cub Scout and Boy Scout groups that are meeting weekly. Most of them are meeting weekly. Few of them take, you know, take a few weeks off here in July and start back in August or September, or three weeks in August.
So how do you get in touch with them group? I mean, is they taking new applicants? I asked if I got some kids interested in doing something like that.
Yes, and there is a bscout.org. Will tell you where the units are in the area. You can put your, put our zip code in, but it's bscout.org. And of course, feel free to call me, I'll be glad to give you information. But that's anywhere in the country, bscout.org. You put in a zip code and it will show you the units that are in the area. But my number is 419-0567, and I'd be glad to talk to you anytime.
I will, I'll be gone, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, thanks for all the work you do with the camps, the Boy Scouts, anything you do for Selma and Dallas County. Let's give him a round of applause. Now, this time we're going to the mayor's report. Mayor Perkins, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. Hopefully you made my work easy. We have, on the budget adjustment approved under the consent agenda, passed on the air pack and harness purchase and approved for the fire department on the consent agenda, thank you. Authorization to apply for the American Rescue Plan funds under the consent agenda, thank you. Y'all did good. Yep, it was removed. Huh, okay. So we can start, we can start there, that one was removed.
Which one, Wilson, which one did you say?
Well.
I think the first three that you named, I think those were all approved.
That's what I was thinking, those were all approved.
Number seven? Oh, no, no, you, but he, we approved those three, that's under the resolution.
Right.
So you're correct, man.
Yeah, okay. The appointment for the Historic Development Commission would like to understand what the questions are relating to that issue at this time.
Counsel, we'll start, I see Councilwoman Janet Thomas, and then I see Councilwoman Carmichael. And also what I've noticed, this is the first time I've seen this one there with the Resolution 138, 221, with the names. I noticed there's some differences in the names, so I just received that today. I don't know if everybody has noticed that or not, but there are some different names on here for the four. And I just saw, so I just want you to know I just saw. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Mayor Perkins, the reason why I have a question on this is because of the Selma Redevelopment Authority and the outline of being the elected, the elected people that plan to develop law before the body of the council. It has said in the language that there's a lot required for the people that were appointed to be on the board. And also it says that in that area, the people that are appointed to be on the board are supposed to be in that district, that resident district. Well, let me finish before I have, I'm just reading what I have. And I read up on the bottom. And my question was that under the selective reading, under the legislature, both of laws that require people, boys being in our, under the government, that there are things in place that we, that I read as the councilperson that require for people that are being on these boards. And the decision, I know it came from you as a recommendation that we vote, that this council vote for these people to be selected for the Historic Commission. But there are the language that we have that I like to go by according to what's here. And I'm quite sure you probably know about this, the bylaws of the Selma Redevelopment. And this is what I've been reading up on. Let me finish. Also, well, the Historic Development Commission, well, I also asked to leave with the laws that are put there required for these people to be placed on the board that were written there, do we have the choice to follow the guideline? Or do we have the choice to vote for the people? Do, do we have the choice to follow the guideline or do we have the choice to, to vote for the people that you recommend? And it's, it's according to, under the rules that require us, that they put there, that we go by. So that's why my problem as the council person, the, the language that is put there. So do I, do I go against what we have written or do I follow the rules?
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Mayor, I know you were responding. Please go ahead.
I really want to ask her, what did she say? I didn't understand it. I'm sorry.
If you didn't understand, I'm quite sure some of the other citizens, they heard what I'm talking about. So you get, uh.
I'm, I'm asking for clarification for your question because I really didn't understand.
Okay. Well, Councilwoman Thomas, do you have something to say before I ask?
No, I don't have anything.
That's not, Councilwoman, I have a question for you there, sir.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank y'all for getting the information and getting the names of people that lived in the historic districts and had the experience of the law requires. I appreciate that. My only issue at this point is that our local codes are not, our local ordinance is not updated with the state ordinance surrounding this, which is the same thing that I mentioned to the attorney a month or so ago. If I'm, if I'm, I don't have it in front of me. But if I'm not mistaken, it says that the members are to be nominated by the mayor and appointed by the council. And, and this resolution does not have that language. So we don't need to vote on a resolution that has opposing language of state law. Because that's, that's my only issue with it. And I think I stated that issue previously. I just want to make sure that we get that cleared up. And, and honestly, we can clear that up with a vote tonight if we needed to, to just vote to adopt state law surrounding that. I'd stop soon.
Can I be added to the question?
It could, yes. If you could give us that precise language, Councilwoman Carmichael, of the addition of the actual code section in there, we could approve the same resolution with the addition of the statute, the state code. And we could approve this resolution based off of that. If we could get this off of the list of things that need to be done.
Thank you.
Which, do you, do you have the side, the state code section? You're looking up. Why he looks that up, can we go to the next item and then come back to? And while I say, guys, the difference, what I was trying to indicate was that this resolution was different from what we've been seeing because we had different names. There are two different names on this resolution. That's Miss Cindy Burden and also Mr. Devin Grant. And those were not, two names submitted. But they also have their address information and all of that, which is in compliance with the code section. So that's why I'm hoping that we can go ahead and move on this because this hasn't been updated properly. If we get that code section in there, I think this will be sufficient for it. This council will vote on it.
Y'all wait a little bit.
Uh, you can go ahead to the next item. Mayor, we'll come into that.
Thank you. The next item, the department head meeting request was discussed in the work session I presented to the council. The request in, in writing further based on conversations and information I had. So I like to do a couple of things here. One, I'd like to just verify the content of this is accurate based on what I received from the meeting after I left. And so I'll just read it into the record. Memorandum to Selma City Council, copy, Selma City Department Heads, from James Perkins Jr., the mayor, Department Heads Request to Meet with City Council. And the memo dated June 29, 2021, Department Heads Requested a Meeting with the City Council. That memo included several proposed meeting dates during the work session on July 8. The council president, council vice president, Councilwoman Ward won made their reasons very clear for not wanting to meet with department heads. The expressions and comments from other council members seemed to range from frustration, disappointment to complete silence. While listening to further comments during the meeting, I decided to poll each council member as to their individual willingness to meet with department heads during the scheduled council meeting on July 13. After completing the, the mayor and attorney's report, I left the work session to my pleasant surprise. The next morning, I received an email announcing that the council agreed to meet with department heads during their next work session on July 27. The council deciding to honor the meeting request made by department heads is a wise, welcome and confusing decision. Therefore, for clarifying purposes, please understand the requested meeting is not for a council meeting in the council, in the city council chamber. Department Heads Request to Meet with the City Council Members to have a conversation in a more neutral space. They do not want to be lectured to, nor do they want council meeting rules limiting conversation. They will be professional. Even though the council rejected the five dates recommended by department heads, they have agreed to meet on the date selected by the city council, which is June 22. Uh, July 22, I apologize. I am suggesting that the meeting be held in the convention center. The convention center provides the space needed to adhere to COVID spacing guidelines, is a public space and is a neutral environment. I hope this compromise meets with your favor with consideration in advance. Thank you. So that is the request that is made to try, hopefully we can come to a consensus. You have, you have chosen the date. The department heads have agreed. They're simply asking that we meet in the convention center.
Counsel, are there any individuals who would like to make any comments regarding the memorandum we added to the record? All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Johnson.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I want to thank you and most of all, I want to thank the council. I was frustrated the night of the work session. But I had to end up leaving. And I did get a call from the next day, the council man, I said that, that, I think that was when they did make a decision after I left, that it's going to meet with the department head. Again, council, councilwoman, I want to say thank you. I think that was something we definitely, we deserved that.
All right, are there other councils that would like to comment at this time? Any other council members that would like to comment at this time? July 22, that is our scheduled work session day. So as we know, we do need to still conduct the business of the city during that work session. So I'm thinking I'll get with Ms. Ellison and Dawn and the mayor, and we'll figure out the logistics of it. Because we still got to have that work session. So perhaps maybe following the work session, then we can go into the meeting. But that's just picking off the cuff, ma'am. But we'll need to work out the logistics. But I think unless I hear any objection from anyone about meeting on 22, then we will place it on our calendar.
You said after the work session?
Yeah, because we still got the work session on that.
I know, but we've been having long work happen.
And, and so hopefully everywhere we meet, you know.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. But we can't stop doing the business of Selma.
No doubt. We have to meet ahead, early before the work session.
Well, our law will be set for 6 o'clock work session.
No, no, no. I'm saying, I'm trying to meet with the department head before.
Maybe, maybe, yeah. Maybe we can, we can work out some logistics. So we'll get with the mayor and our assistants and try to work out the logistics.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, anyone else want to state on that? Because Councilman Hartman did state at the last meeting that he wanted to speak to them at the work session. So that was over there. So I would know when to jump in.
I do want to make a comment. That's fine with me, out of my meeting. But with this, with the agenda, and by the time we get to our items, ma'am, there's no one here to answer any questions. So hopefully, you know, the, the department heads and you as well can kind of stick around at the work session so that we can get our questions answered.
Let's have a conversation about that. You know, some of the department heads show up for work at 6:00 a.m. The council meeting starts at 6:00 p.m. and goes to 9:30 sometimes, or 10 o'clock. And that's a bit much. The second thing is, I would much rather, I think a lot of the things that I see on the business agenda, they could be handled with a phone call. If you would just simply call the office and have a conversation. I think many of those things can be resolved. And so, you know, that's, that's where, that's where, that's my request. That's my response and my request.
But what I'm saying about those items, some of those items could be answered with a phone call. But if we put in the work order and we don't know whether the work order has been completed or not, we're here to ask the question whether it's done or what it's going to take to get it done. So.
Again, that's a phone call. And, and quite frankly, as work orders are, are completed, we can send you a notification and say done.
Yeah.
And we can do that. So I don't think we need to just meet for meeting's sake. I'm just saying, I, I have to look out for the health and welfare of the team. And that's really a long time, guys, for them to be here doing the city's business. And so when I, when I'm standing here and when I come in, I'm not advocating for James Perkins. I'm an advocate for the folks that are actually out here getting this work done for the citizens. That's all I'm doing. And so don't take this as though it is some personal agenda of mine. It's not. It really is about trying to advocate for the people who show up every day and really do the hard work for the city. So I think, again, we can, we can have a conversation. And I really believe we can resolve many of the issues that you have on your business agenda with a phone call, an email, a notification.
All right. And we want to thank you. And also in the spirit of unity and togetherness, just as you said, you're here to serve as an advocate for those department heads and those employees. We're here to serve as advocates for the people of Selma. And which also includes all of us, not just non-employees or, it includes employees, it includes the citizens out there, includes ourselves up here. So we're all here to offer advocacy for our citizens. So in the spirit of unity and togetherness, I read the memorandum where it said, they do not want to be lectured to, nor do they want council meeting rules limitation, limiting communication. In that same vein of unity and togetherness, we would ask that that same be extended to the council. We too will not be lectured. And we too will be very respectful and respectful. Speaking of, this is.
You, I appreciate your statement, but let me just qualify. You stated the first phrase of my sentence, but you didn't complete my sentence. My sentence was, I advocate for the people who are actually doing the work for the citizens. And so I am advocating for the citizens as well. To get the work, I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to be clear.
Exactly. Absolutely fine.
Yeah.
Hold on. Is that absolutely fine? And we are on the same page. Because I think we basically said the same thing. Because while we call certain individuals name out, I think if we just use the term, we're up here to offer advocacy for everyone. I think that takes care of it. Because we're up here for everyone. No big eyes, no little head, everyone. So thank you so much. With that said, let's continue. Mayor?
We, the pavement, I made an executive decision. I am not going to pursue this bid. I think we are in a, a very compromising position at this point with where we are. Unless the council chooses to do something otherwise, I am removing this bid from consideration. And we will just have to wait. Citizens are going to have to wait and get these 250 lots cut as we can get to them. The reason for that, I'll state for the record, was talked about in the work session. At the time that these bids were open, the information was shared in its totality with the council. And when that happened, at, at least one council member indicated that he had been in conversations with the vendors or vendor. He did, I don't, I'm not sure what he said, vendor or vendors, or the bidders. That then put us in a very compromising situation. As a consequence, at this point, we don't know who knows the dollar value of each individual bid. I'm not making any accusations. I'm just making a point of clarify, a point of observation. And so as a consequence of that, there is no way that we can move forward to rebid this. And we will have to look at the next set of laws, of lots that we need to do to proceed with this process. If the council chooses to do something different, I'm open for that, most certainly.
Any comments? Yes, Councilwoman Thomas and then Councilwoman Carmichael. Anybody else?
No one speaking to the.
Hold on a second, Councilwoman Thomas. Anybody else? After that, and Councilwoman Jane, anyone else? After that, we'll close the session on, so we can move on to the next item. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Citizens of Selma, I want y'all to understand that we have laws that we have to abide by. When, when the legislative of this body break the law, it's on our head. When the process of procedure of this bid, compared bid law, when the, when the steps are not followed according to the law's saying, and we take a vote and we find out that we have, have broken the law according to it, and we get legal advice, free legal advice through the Alabamian municipality. And according to this bid that was done, there were three things that were in violation. Also, the league told us, we get, we get advice, we don't, we don't just jump up and do things. When, when you bring something to us and it's not followed according to the way the bid law is, and if they find three things that are wrong, it's, it's held on our account. And it said that if we were to do this, the consequence, the penalty that will be held against this body of the council. And we discussed this. That is the reason why this body of the council do go to training to make sure that we are doing as the legislative branch require of the government to be operating. And that's all I have to say that, that's all I have to say. We are here to, to abide by the government.
In response to your comments, Councilwoman, it seems as though you are disagreeing because I agree with you. I'm just, listen, I actually agree with you that there was a flaw in the bid and that we were going to back, I'm backing away from it. I'm not, I'm, I don't, no, no, no.
Some citizens do not understand, some people, and I try to make it simple for the citizen. You, some people in here might understand. A lot of people don't know about.
Well, let me make it plain. I'll make it plain.
Compared to bid law. A lot of people sitting at home listening, and a lot of people, this is why you need to explain. I'm explaining it simply to you.
Okay, okay.
According to the law on the book, if the procedures are not carried out according to what it says, this body of this legislature will have to, we are encountered for whatever law that being broken. And this is why citizens need to understand, the reason you said about those 200 lots, we have to carry out the basic rules people that compare to bid. We have to redo it. And that is what the Alabamian municipality say. It can be done, but we have to follow according to the way the bid is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman, I just, I have to have the opportunity to respond to her. And every time she talks, I'm going to respond. But anyway, Councilwoman, listen, I was trying to be brief, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Because of the time constraints that we would like to uphold. But, you know, if the Councilwoman wants me to be more detailed, I can be. This, this whole situation, citizens of Selma, has to do with the time was left off of the, the request for bid. When the request for bid went out, the date was on it for the date that, that the bid would be opened. But the time of the opening was left off. The consequence of that is that the citizens did not get. The consequence of that is that the citizens did not get proper notification of the time the bid would open. Because of that, the question that I had was whether or not that was a critical error or whether that could be designated as a clerical error and we could move forward and get the lots cut. My goal was not to try to be defiant. My goal was to try to figure out how to get the lots cut using the low responsible bids that did come in. And after, get consulting with three different attorneys and they didn't all agree, but we finally came to a consensus that it is a fatal error. And that we needed to back away from this, and that's what I am saying. I'm saying that I actually agree with you. And that we are not going to try to push this forward. But at this point, also I stated that because the bids were, not just the tally sheet, but the actual bid documents that every vendor submitted was turned over to the council, at this point, we have no way to go forward to re-bid those same lots. We don't. And, and so as a consequence of that, I'm pulling it back and we'll have to come up with some other configuration of lots or whatever we're going to do to move forward. But those 250 lots in that bid package will not go forward.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Carmichael and Councilman James.
Okay, I just want to make clear, you said you were pulling the bid back because those, those documents were released and a council person talked to a contractor. And that insinuates that, that confidential information was shared. And that, that didn't happen. I'm the one that said that I talked to somebody and you pointed that out at the meeting. And I would never share confidential information. I just want to say this publicly. Because, because those, that, all confidential information is, we can see that. We're, we're part of the government, we're the legislative body, we need confidential information to make decisions. So to insinuate that that information was shared with the contractor, I think is wrong. And the reason we're having to pull this bid back is because the law was not followed. It's not because anybody shared any information. That didn't happen. I just want to be clear on that.
All right.
Councilwoman, uh, I did not say initially that you shared information that you had a conversation with a vendor. You said that. I repeated. And so I'm not accusing you of anything. What I'm saying is the consequence of your admission in this body put us in an untenable position and I, hold on, hold on a second. And even if the date situation, even if the date situ, if the time situation was not an issue, we did, we still don't have a way to go forward to re-bid. That's all I'm saying. So that's all I'm saying.
So hopefully we're together, all right?
We, we have every right to see every bit of information in that bid. Every right. So, so I just want to make that clear for future, when we ask for that information, we have every right to see every bit of information in that bid.
But the question becomes, when do you have that right? Before the, before the announcement of the awardees are after. And that's a question that's not answered.
We make the announcement of the awardees, we have that, we, uh, do I need to read that?
No, no, you don't, Councilwoman, no, you don't, uh.
But if you're not gonna get to all, that's not.
No, it's, it's not necessary. It's because of, all public meetings are not council meetings. It's that only the bids in a public meeting. A public meeting could be announced and everybody's invited to come. That's all the time. So I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, it doesn't have to be the council body to do that. But we, we, listen, we, we can, we can nitpick this one all night. That's the, you, you love doing it and I do too, so we, we don't need that long.
And we, as, as a council body, as legislative body, shouldn't make a procedure, a local procedure for this, which I've shared with everybody, and I think we need to follow up on that and be sure that we're clear locally how this moves forward in the future, because we don't need these things to happen.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lisa James.
Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize for my tolerance. But, um, I have been listening to everyone. Yes, we're entitled to the documents. But when we get those documents, we have to be very careful how we share documents. And now, what's happening now, citizens are gonna suffer from grass. So as council persons, we, we need to make some decisions because we can't keep fighting about what we're gonna do because grass is still growing. The grass is, all this rain we did, we getting more grass, we getting more grass. So whatever we need to do, we need to do it as a body and, and, and do what we gotta do for the citizens, because we up here for the citizens. So whatever we need to do, we need to squash whatever, the past, if it was a mistake made, we need to move forward and make something happen so this grass can be done.
Mr. President, I, I know.
Go ahead.
No, I was just talking, what's your favorite?
Oh, you finished, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You know, uh, I, I, I sit back here and listen. But you know what? Our constituents saying about us, they say, we ain't doing this. I'm telling you. So we had opportunity to get this grass cut, now we don't have the opportunity to get this grass cut. We need to come up with a plan next week, this week, to get this grass cut. I don't wanna wait till next month or whatever we gotta do. We gotta get this grass cut. I'm talking about ASAP, y'all. Because I know in my, in war five, I have some in the state properties and lots, overgrown lots. Matter of fact, on the corner of First Avenue, not First Avenue, Sixth Avenue or some fair road, somebody gonna get killed in that hillside because you can't, you gotta pull out of traffic in order to, to see.
Right.
And that's just bad. So we gotta, we gotta come up with a game plan, Mr. President. I don't, I don't care if you call it up. Especially call me, we need to get this grass cut.
I agree. Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We said after one council person, we were gonna close the office session. We did. But if someone said, I heard the word solution. So I think that's a very good word. So we will, and challenging that since you said solution, Councilman Carter.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to put the grass cutting funds back into the grass cutting account where they originally were, so that we can get the grass cut over the next couple of months of this summer.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second? All right. But unfortunately, we're not supposed to be talking during council meeting. Thank you. We appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, for that time.
All right, hold on, let me.
Yes, sir, I thought you, I thought you were moving on to this.
Ah, well, I'm moving, I'm moving. I'm gonna try to make this quick. Uh, council and public, what you see is a professional exchange of people that have the same goal. They just wanna make sure that they get it right. I respect Mayor Perkins' position. And I agree, and I thank him for pulling that back. Once he got knowledge and understood that that was a fatal flaw, he did the right thing. And he pulled it back. I thank you, Mayor Perkins, for doing that, because that was the problem. I thank Councilwoman Jamie Thomas for trying to let the public understand why she was in so much opposition to it. So that the public understand, it's not Councilwoman Jamie Thomas against Mayor Perkins, it's Councilwoman Jamie Thomas doing her research and realizing she wants to get it done right by the law. I appreciate Councilman Carmichael, when he thought someone had said something or thought something might have been misunderstood, necessarily said something, he wanted to clear his name. Our name is all we got, and I understand it and I respect that. I respect Councilwoman Lisa James, where her basically saying, let's get something done. Same thing with Councilman Randolph, let's get something done. I'm just gonna say this, we've got to get it done, we got to get it done legally as well. With that said, thank you, public, for your patience. Mayor has said this before, and some of the council members, please be patient. And we hope that our patience will yield positive results. Thank you, Mayor Perkins.
Legal, moral, and evidence.
All.
Everything right is not legal. And everything legal is not right.
Amen.
We gotta be better than that.
Figure it out as you go. Um, I would, uh, um, like to just acknowledge to the council that you would get a first draft of the 21, 22 fiscal year budget before the next work session. I would strongly encourage us to go ahead and get your finance committee together so we can do the work necessary to get it passed and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Johnson.
On behalf of Evernight Mission, I was able to, uh, get the funding that I've been getting for the previous several years for the Eastham Swimpool.
Yeah.
Um, I had a chat with Chad.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I said, Mike, I got bad news for you. I said, what, what's, what's wrong, Chad? He said, well, I got some good and bad. What one you want first?
Yeah.
I said, give me the goods and I'm gonna give you the bad, but I can't get the money to you. I said, well, Chad, thank you, bro. I can't complain because you always done good by the show. He said, but good is, you wanted 5,000, so I'm gonna give you 7,500. This is from Chad, from Evernight Mission, on behalf of the Deacon Pool in Eastham, a water. Again, it's a water, but it's for the all waters, for the kids who come swimming. This all for another reason.
We may have some good news for you. With, as a result of this presentation, I'm gonna ask Dr. Hendrix if she would just share an update on the Deacon's pool situation with councilmen and citizens at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, councilmen and mayor. Uh, so we do have an update. So the good news is, uh, we, we have, we're in the process of solidifying a date for the pool to be inspected. What we found out is that unfortunately, the pool has not been inspected for a number of years. And so we need to be sure that we get it inspected and repaired properly. And so we do have a company out of Plankton, uh, that will be coming, but, you know, it's July, it's high pool season time. So it will be later in August before it happens. But once we, I nailed down the specific date, but they have said that they can come do the work, they're qualified to do the work. They were recommended by one of our environmental health specialists at our county health department. And so we have done our due diligence to find the right type of company with the right expertise to be able to get our pool back up and running. It's gonna take some time, so it's not gonna be fast. But in order to do it right, we're talking about doing things right. In order to do it right, this is what we have to do in order to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I want water to understand that we not overlooking this one pool. We didn't open last year because of the pandemic and the layoffs during the last administration. But anyway, uh, the process is in the, in the making. Uh, we do have some funds to help go toward it, and that fund is earmarked strictly for the swimming pool and water and the Deacon Pool. And, uh, we appreciate you.
All right, Councilman.
Resolution presentation. And, uh, I'm gonna ask Councilman Carmichael, did you find the language that we need to add to that resolution so that we can vote on that?
Yes. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution R. 138-20/21 with an amendment to adopt Alabama Code Title 11-68-3. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution R. 138-20/21 with an amendment to adopt Alabama Code Title 11-68-3.
Okay. You put that in form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a second? All right, please allow the record to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Carmichael and perfectly seconded by Councilman, uh, Johnson to approve Resolution R. 138-21. With an amendment to adopt Alabama Code Title 11-68-3. Okay. You put that in form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a second? All right, please allow the record to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Carmichael and perfectly seconded by Councilman, uh, Johnson to approve Resolution R. 138-21. Randolph, thank you. Councilman Randolph. Uh, Resolution R. 138-20/21 with the amendment of the Alabama Code Section 11-68-3. I'm already ready for the question. Roll call, Alabama Club.
President Young?
Yes.
Councilman Harvey? Councilwoman Kristi Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. That'd be taken off the list, ma'am. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Now, let's move to your term is.
We've got too many hours. President Young. Is this on?
No.
Good evening, President Young, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Perkins, ladies and gentlemen in the council chamber and all of the listening audience. I want to report on several informational items and one action item. My secretary was sitting here a few minutes ago, and now she's not. She had my action item, she was gonna text it out to the entire council. That action item consists of a written statement from, from my office concerning the policy on who signs off on the management representation letter at the end of the annual audit. That issue became a tempest in the teapot, I thought at first last year, but it turned out to be more involved than that. We've got one federal agency which has requested that we let them know what this body's adopted policy is as it relates to who's authorized to sign off on the management representation letter. So that that failure to have that occurred is avoided going forward. And we don't have what happened last time reoccurred. It involved a vast expanding of the city of Selma. I can't think of anything, or very, very few things much more critical than part of that. So, once I get that, it's basically one paragraph statement. To circulate with you, I would like for you to, to read it, I'll answer any questions you have about it. I call my, I'm considering my comments, I'll preface it to any questions you might have about that. I told the council last week what my recommendation was on the weed of vapor issue, I'm not gonna go back there. Suffice it to say, I said that I would do more due diligence rather than asking you to categorically and carte blanche vote before I did more due diligence, and I did that due diligence. As a matter of fact, I talked to, uh, the chief counsel of the League of Municipalities. And I talked with an attorney who recently gave a lecture on the bid requested by Alabama League of Municipalities. And, uh, the three of us saw how to handle and ordered following the bid law, but we had a difference of opinion on a term called substantial compliance. As a result of the difference in opinion, I conferred with the mayor and, uh, his decision was ready to use tonight. The report that I made last week included a resolution on the landfill. I didn't know if that item was included in any new business of the council's tonight or not. I didn't, unless I missed something, I didn't see
It needs to be presented.
whether that item was voted on.
It was.
But it was presented.
It was. We talked about the work session, but we haven't, nobody on.
That's okay. I, that's what I wanted to confirm. That's what I wanted to confirm. It has been presented and I'm asking that it be considered for approval.
Okay.
The street, the issue on landfill, I believe was, well, I don't believe now, because I know I was out there today, and, uh, the street is in bad shape. So, that, that's, that item is being turned over to the mayor's office and, uh, hopefully probably the public works, but I'll report to the mayor again on that later today. I was just out there this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to report to him on the request, any action at all. The Pineheart, Avenue, Pineheart Street location has an issue concerning the light weight. That issue is due to be had, the tax assistance office is gonna be consulted with that, and we'll be doing that tomorrow morning, so a report will be made on it for your next work session, or in conjunction with your next work session. Uh, this is my last informational item, and the last item on my agenda. Uh, I was informed today by an attorney that I was quoted in a local newspaper as making a statement to the effect that I either supported or encouraged or didn't think it was a big deal that a portion of the bid law was not followed, that portion being the reference to a date when the bid's reopened. That's not what I said, and I'm going to take a look at the newspaper myself and see what's in it. This is more so for informational purposes, because it points out how easily we can be misquoted, all of us, not just me, not just the mayor, but anyone of you. And I'm going to get my hands on that newspaper, but for tonight, I wanted to make a statement about allegedly a quota mine, that I was making light of the fact that a bid date was not included. That is not what I said. I said that there was a time I included, and that was the issue, a time that was a date included. Rather than be the dead horse, I would take it up with the local reporter who made that statement. And by the way, I don't particularly care about being interviewed for newspaper radio or television, I've been there and done that, and you can also get in the more trouble than doing good. But I will definitely take issue with this if I've been misquoted, uh, because my reputation and my license to practice law can be, uh, underlined. That, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President is my name for it.
Thank you. All right, so let's take it. Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
It was, it was, hope, Mr. President, it was just pointing out that I was also, well, a contract was in the resolution, the landfill resolution. Her contract, I'm just pointing out sadly, but the item was left off of my report.
Yeah, let's do this, you said several different items, and what I would like to do is start that first item, give the council opportunity to ask questions on camera or whatever. So let's start with what's your first, uh, your first item?
Management representation letter.
The name representation?
A management representation letter.
I'm sorry.
A signatory designated by the council, a policy designated individuals or signatory authorized to sign management representation letter due at the end of each annual audit.
And that's based on this?
That's based on the schedule of the council, yes. I brought this to your attention before verbally, and I was asked to introduce it right, and that's what I did, that's what I did.
Okay. Council, we have before you, uh, a letter from Attorney Madison, we're handling this issue right now, so let's talk to this Councilwoman Jane Thomas.
So, he wants the body of the council to create a policy in this, uh, okay, uh, you, when do you want this? Immediately, or when?
Immediately.
Okay, we, Mr. President?
Continue.
I would like to have some suggestions, uh, to this body of the council. Uh, that is our duty, and, uh, I would like to have, uh, immediately, we, can we get together and go ahead and do this?
Yeah, I think we could refer this to the administrative.
Yes, that's what I was saying, administrative.
Call me immediately, to, as soon as possible, to address this issue.
Yes.
Uh, we just got it.
Uh-huh, and that's why I was saying.
And this gives us the opportunity to review and do it. So, uh, unless there's any objection, I refer that to the administrative committee for immediate, uh, immediate, as soon as possible, to address that. All right? Any objection? All right, you continue, go on to that item, Attorney Madison.
The next item was Resolution R. 150-20/21, the request for personnel action at the inner landfill of Selma, Alabama, due to an emergency.
Okay.
That's the resolution presented to you previously for action, personnel action for Marcus Thompson, the public works director who's in effect serving as interim director of the landfill, and the E3 Solutions contract. And I explained, I believe last, I don't believe, I know I explained why those actions were necessary.
Okay, so that one, that resolution was R., what was that?
150-20/21.
150-20/21?
Correct.
And that mentioned Mr. Marcus Thompson and also E3 Solutions?
And, and Henry Hicks, the public works director.
Okay, I, I, I'll try to do that. Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. President, Matt, I addressed the attorney. Attorney Madison, back here about, what, three weeks ago, uh, when we, when you brought this, uh, was, was presented to the body of the council, you have all of these three requests in one, and we were at, one of the council had, uh, put in a request that you will come back with the resolution breaking down into one, each, each individual, because you have it combined where, uh, that, uh, we might agree on, might give a vote on one somebody, but you have it drawled up, you have it all drawled up into one. And we asked, it was asked of you to come back as I, as the request of the body of the council to rewrite each individual resolution, which this body of the council can ask that because you represent the city, uh, to govern, and we asked, it was asked, and that's what we was waiting on, for you to come back with the resolution with each of those department individuals. And then, if we had to vote on it, then we would tell you, uh, you can't just, we can't just go and, and vote the way you have got it. We, we were asking you, normally you would give us a resolution for each one of those departments separate. So, the recommendation of the body of the council was asked by a councilperson, and that's why we was waiting on you, as you represent the city, to, to respond, we were looking for that.
If you're talking about Councilman Carmichael's questions about the resolution, I actually did see that, I actually spent several hours on my vacation working on it, I was not understanding that three separate resolutions were being asked for. I was understanding that clarification of what the need was for the personnel actions on each, as to each individual were concerned. So, I, your question, your statement about the form has, has, is, is, is fine, I don't have a problem with that. I was not of the impression or understanding that three separate resolutions were being asked for.
Yeah, it was.
I believe you, I'm not questioning you, I'm just saying that was definitely a lack of communication.
Mr. Marcus Thomas, is that what you want to say?
Yes, that, that's what, uh, what I thought, Councilman Carmichael asked of you.
Well, he probably can explain it better.
Okay, well, explain it.
Yeah, I, I just, I think I, uh, had said that some people may take issue with one, uh, so it would probably be more likely to get a vote on some other ones if they were separate.
I, I, I saw the email, and, and I did, in conjunction with several other individuals in the departments affected, had a discussion on my vacation about this, that's why I know what happened. And, and the only thing I'm saying is, I was not aware that I was being asked to draft three separate resolutions, which would have probably been a piece of cake, even though I was doing it on my vacation.
All right, uh, so then we won't continue on too much longer. Uh, is any objection if you can draft the three separate resolutions for this body of the council? Any objection? Any objection? Uh, Attorney Madison, again, those three separate resolutions drawn up.
Post-statement. Post-statement.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. And you can get along to your next question.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Yes, Councilman.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Earlier, you said it was, it was, uh, different in two of the papers, uh, you was talking about the league and, and some information that you had got.
I said that there was a difference of opinion as between, uh, two of the three attorneys on whether or not substantial compliance was an issue that deserved consideration of moving forward with the weed of vapor resolution and contracts, and therefore I gave, uh, that information to the mayor, and he made an objective decision.
And, uh, another thing, uh, you had said that you was gonna break up, uh, uh, the thing about the alley being blocked off from, uh, Green Street?
Yes, um, the alley has to be cleared, the homeowner whose fence line infringes upon the alley has to be moved back to the original line of demarcation for the property of their homeowner. It was extended intentionally into the alley, and it has to be removed from that line where it is now back to the original, uh, survey, survey area.
Are you gonna write that to the city?
I will, yes, most definitely, most definitely. And there was another issue involving the two property owners at that same location that I said the city has no business in because it's an issue between two private property owners, and they would have to resolve that.
Okay.
By seeking advice from their own legal.
I, uh, may, uh, maybe, uh?
I wanted to share something with him that was taken off of the consent.
Okay.
Agenda that would have otherwise been on this agenda.
Okay.
Took that off the consent agenda.
All right. Uh, the mayor was just pointing out number seven on your consent agenda, the Resolution R. 125-20/21, uh, was removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to it. Councilwoman Jane has a question related to this, man.
Uh, Attorney Madison, even though this, this, uh, Councilman Randolph wore it, but it bothered me last week when that young man came, have we had, do we have an update on the young man next to Otter Zone, because it really bothered me about his situation?
It, it, it was actually, I thought it was behind Otter Zone, and that's.
It's all over, you know.
That, that's a public works issue. I actually, it's a public works issue, but I actually drove over there to see what I could see about that. I've decided to stop just thinking about it, go look, that's why I was at landfill today, landfill, dry, it's got holes everywhere. Uh, but, but I could not find, there was a ditch being discussed that was causing water to back up into somebody's house. I thought that the public works director had addressed that or was going to address that, and it is definitely a public works issue. That's something that I think the mayor keeps bringing out about, bringing things through his office so they can be routed to the correct.
Are you talking about the ditch or the dam?
No, no, not the dam, young man stood before us, uh, with the.
It's over now, or something like you said.
Do it, do it happen. Do it happen?
Yes, D O A T R T Y, I think. Yeah, I, I went, I drove over there, uh, last week, uh, just to look.
I think the council secretary sent me an email today, is that the one you sent an email to our council secretary?
Uh, no, sir.
That wasn't, okay, that wasn't that.
But it's, it's wrong. It's definitely a public works issue.
It's wrong.
See, what, what, what the problem is, throughout the years, the ditch needs to dug enough, and so, when the water runs out the streets, it don't have nowhere to go, so it goes into everybody's yards. Also, the Otter Zone is behind the town, so he can't get a double lane from the street and Otter Zone. What Otter Zone need to do is put a curtain or something, make that probably so the water wouldn't run in and sink some of the water. So, all the water from Otter Zone, once it come out there, it go into everybody.
You're talking about basically a retaining wall?
Yeah, like a retaining wall to keep it from going, uh.
But that's a private.
Yes, that's a private district, so.
Yeah, that's a private business. And, 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 and that's what I'm saying, you're talking engineering and public works, and that's a little bit out of the legal realm is what I'm saying. I would vote the public works department to weigh in on that one for sure. I don't have any problem, once they do, pointing out if there's any legal issue that needs to be addressed, but I'm just saying public works problem.
Right, and I agree with you, this is a public works issue, and so, we'll continue on with the attorney matters now, because that is a public works issue. All right, also, the item I think that Murphy just mentioned to you about.
Emergency declaration as an essential statement.
That was a resolution that was removed from the consent agenda, that was R. 125-20/21 is in that one?
Right, and I, I, I just wanna get it right now, that the reason was for removing it from the consent agenda.
Okay, I think Councilwoman Jane Thomas is the one who moved to, Councilwoman Thomas, can you speak to it?
I have a question, I wanna, I wanna ask you, why are you, why do you wanna put that in a resolution? Because it, it has been eight months, uh, past Zeta Hurricane. October the 28th was when Zeta came in, uh, and now, the, the resolution that you're requiring us, it got my eyes, and I went on selective reading, and, uh, I was kinda puzzled about it because of, uh, we did, uh, we have done two emergency, uh, declare of Zeta, and then, uh, you come and do, put on a resolution to be done and use it as the repair of the stadium under Zeta Hurricane, when we already have applied, uh, the insurance has been applied for the damage, which was city property, I think you like to say you have like 23 or property.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one property had been damaged, uh, under, uh, Zeta, the hurricane, and after eight months, coming up to almost nine months, you, you want us to do a, a resolution? And can you explain that to me, and then, I'm gonna give you what my response that I got, or I had asked a question about this. Are we allowed to go back and do a resolution from October the 28th and use it on the, the Maury Stadium, where we already have voted for the money for the director to do the repair to the seats, and where we have already done, uh, insurance claim? And I wanted to know was this council, I had to call the lead on this to make sure that I get this vote right, because I felt like, uh, down the line, something was wrong. And, uh, can you tell me why we had to?
The resolution was drawn up?
I did, and, 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 and I, I want you to hear the mayor, too, but I did make that effort last Thursday, I believe, to point out, to point, you can ask me to repeat it, sure.
No, no, I want to ask you this, did you, have you heard of emergency procurement?
Procurement?
Yes, have you heard of that?
Sure.
Okay. That one had got mine, that's why I was kinda, uh, curious about this, because I wanted to know from the lead, did, did we have authority to make a resolution from Zeta from October the 28th to now, uh, using saying that we are going. And I want to know was this council, I had to call the lead on this to make sure that I get this vote right because I felt like, uh, down the line, something was wrong. And, uh, can you tell me why we had to?
The resolution was wrong, ma'am?
I did, and, 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 and I, I want you to hear the mayor too. But I did make that effort last Thursday, I believe.
Can I ask?
To point out, to point, you can ask me to repeat it, sure.
No, no, I want to ask you this. Did you, have you heard of emergency po- procurement?
Procurement?
Yes. Have you heard that?
Sure.
Okay. That one had got mine. That's why I was kind of, uh, curious about this because I wanted to know from the lead, did, did we have authority to make a resolution from Zeta from October the twenty-eighth to now? Uh, using saying that we are going to use this as a repair at the stadium? Do you know what my answer I got?
Yes, Laura Lyne told me what your answer was.
Okay, so you know.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm through with it.
Yes.
Thank you.
She told me what your answer is.
What was it sounds?
The answer was basically part and possible what I explained last week. There are two basic qualifying criteria for declaring an emergency. One being in an area where the public health, safety and general welfare are affected. The other being immediacy. The only issue in Laura Lyne's issue is with immediacy because the storm occurred, hurricane occurred October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of last, uh, year. When I talked about this last week, that's what I was just saying. What I pointed out was that there was no question but that this was a matter of public health, safety and welfare, general welfare. Because the stadium could not be used without repairs. And that there were repairs already being planned. And the only question was how we're gonna effect, effectuate those repairs? How fast and for what reason and where in the stadium? What I said too was that the immediacy issue gave me pause, if you remember. If I'm not mistaken, does anybody remember that?
I do.
Immediacy gave me pause. But that the reason I drafted the resolution, the way I did, was to point out over six, seven and eight months, it's taken that much time for us to get paid from the insurance company for the plane that's still pending for repairs that, that the cost of labor had escalated. All this is in my resolution, your resolution to consider. That the cost of labor and materials has escalated, that they were going to escalate further. That there was a need for use of the stadium by both public and private schools as well as citizens of silver in general. And that while some people might think six or seven months to be totally outside the realm of immediacy, what we were trying to do was get approval to go ahead and repair the stadium now as quickly as possible. Uh, and the mayor wanted to talk. I did this. I asked the Recreation Director to come up with a plan to get the stadium ready for football by August. When she got, when did you start?
I started in April and this project became mine on June fifteenth because it was, it belonged to someone else. And then this project, you asked me, you weren't gonna start in June fifteenth.
So when, when she became mayor with it, because initially it was an issue of trying to get the money to do it. When we realized that we were not going to get the money through the CARES Act or the Rescue, American Rescue Plan money in time, we're not gonna get our insurance money in time to do it. I said, Doctor Hendricks, come up with a way to get the stadium ready so that our children can play football in August. And so she did what I asked her to do. And that was, and she came up with a plan, with a strategy. And that was to identify a local, uh, manufacturing company who was willing to provide the wood or the material for the bleachers. And we also went out and identified other resources to get the work done. And then we said, okay, now that we've got this done, let's go in and see how many volunteers we can get to do, to help with this work and put public works on it to get the work done. So we came up with this strategy, but the only way to get it done between now and August was to declare an emergency. If we beat it out, as per state law, we will not make that deadline. That's the emergency. That's why this is so critical to our community. Because we've been locked down, this is what the citizens want. This is the only thing that the school system has asked us to do. And I was trying to figure out a way to get it done. That's why I asked her to do what she did. The, 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 there's no need to come after the attorney because they doing what I asked them to do. I just wanted to stand up and own it and I wanted to explain why I did what I did. But, but, but see, what has happened here is every time we try to do something good for the community, it's probed, it's dug into, you find one flaw and kill it. I'm just, look, I'm just, all I'm doing is try, all we're doing is trying to do the work. Uh, uh, look.
Finish up, man.
All we're doing is trying, all we're doing is trying to do the work. Listen, I could, I could stand here, Mr. President, I could stand here and identify at least ten things the previous council did illegal. But because you voted on it, you made it legal. And all I'm saying is that this council does have the authority to vote it up or down. You can vote it up or down, it doesn't matter. My thing is to argue for the people. That's all I'm doing.
Councilwoman Thomas, you can finish up your question.
The reason why this, this body of the council can sit up there and, and agree. But we are the legislative government. And when we go to our training and we learn and we know better, we do better. And this wasn't happened the last time with these laws, with, 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 with this council. He's saying that, uh, in the past, okay? If we hadn't voted for this resolution, this is why I keep telling the mayor, I have told the mayor several times, that if, if we get anything from the lawyer or from, from him, I, I read my selective reading. And the reason why I came up on that, ma'am, I was reading it and I know that this council, we had voted last year when Zeta came in on August the twenty-eighth, we voted to move one million dollars to clean up. Then, when you came in at, as the mayor, we voted for FEMA, the money to be used for FEMA. And also I knew that we had already filed the claims on the, the government property. And we were waiting on to receive a check. People have to understand, when the legislative body agreed to something, we better know what we agreeing to.
Man, I agree with that.
Well, can I, let me finish, ma'am. I'm not being sarcastic and I'm not being, I'm being smart. I'm being smart because when you give me something, you're the mayor, but we are the legislative body. We are supposed to know better and we are supposed to be able to make the right decision. I understand things you say you're trying to do for the city. But it is wrong for a mayor to expect the council not to abide by the law, ma'am. That's all I gotta say, ma'am. That's all.
Hold on, hold on, Councilman Randolph, because we had others that, that, I think Councilman Jensen had to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, is there any way we can put this motion back in place or we can vote on it up or down?
Yes, we can, uh, we can vote on this motion if someone makes it. If someone makes the motion. If someone makes the motion, we can vote.
I make the motion.
Can we have some discussion?
Sir. Uh, we, we, well, we can discuss, we can discuss, we're sitting discussing. Alright, I need to, let's get some clarity on the motion that's being made. You're moving to approve.
Resolution R one twenty-five twenty dash twenty-one.
Okay, and it was seconded by Councilman Randolph. Now, are we ready for the discussion? We'll go and start with, uh, Councilman Carmichael and then Councilwoman James. And then Councilwoman Thomas.
My intent is not to kill this, so I just want to make that clear. Uh, uh, and, and like you said earlier, everything that's right is not lawful. And so we gotta be careful about that. So that's why we asked the questions that we did. And, um, so am I understanding that, that we're doing this to avoid bid law? Is that, is that what I'm gathering out of what you just said?
We're doing this to try to meet a deadline.
To try to be a deadline. Because, because the bid law would, would prolong the process.
Well, absolutely it would and, uh, but we're doing it to try to meet a deadline. And, and, and I, I tell you guys, uh, you know, I, look, I don't like this any more than any of you do. The things that we bring up here to you, there's no one trying to get you to, to break the law or anything like that. That's not the intent. The intent is to try to get this worked out. The only, I, you know, uh, go ahead, I'm just gonna listen. I'm, I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
My hands are up.
Okay, Councilwoman James, I think, was now.
My, my hands are up.
Okay.
I, I really don't think anybody up here, um, is just up here for any reason. I read a lot sometime, I don't say anything, but I read everything I get. I read everything I get and I call, they call. Uh, I'm very knowledgeable on what I vote on and what I do. You know, we complain about our kids don't have anything to do, nowhere to go. We have, we have did, we have voted on other emergency things. We have done it on this board here. We have voted on other emergency. Yes, we need to do everything that's legal, but we need to do it right. I have no problem in doing things right. But we gotta trust people and we gotta start trusting people decisions. Whether it's the council, the mayor, and our attorney works for us. If we don't sometimes trust his judgment that he's out there reading and doing what he needs to do, we got problems. But yes, we supposed to read, yes, we supposed to go to class, go in class tomorrow. But we can't keep prolonging stuff for our citizen because we up here big. We, the stadium is in a mess, everybody up there. We couldn't have graduation, Selma High couldn't have graduation because it was in a mess. If you go out there, it's a mess. We, we couldn't have graduation. We had parents hot mad because they couldn't go to the stadium. We had artists in the neighborhood, our kids couldn't play football, they couldn't do all this. So we got emergency situation going on where we can help our kids. You know, yes, we need to make sure it's right. We need to make sure it's right.
Okay.
But we, we need to move on and stop, you know, we, we need, we need to stop this. We need to stop this because as Councilman Randolph said, the citizens are talking about us. We need to start learning how to agree and disagree and move on and make a better self.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilman, was it Randolph or is it Councilwoman Thomas?
I just wanna, I just want to make sure that the attorney is saying that this resolution is okay to vote on before we make the decision.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to, and I'm kind of on where you are, Councilwoman Thomas. I understood what was going back and forth, that there was a discussion with the General Counsel of Alabama University. And she talked about those two issues.
She talked about one.
Okay, the immediacy.
Immediacy.
Okay. Give me some clear language. What did she say? Does that prove, would that make this an illegal? If we were to vote on that, the fact that it is not immediate in the sense of time, would that make this an illegal vote? That's what I need to know.
I'm gonna tell you exactly what she said. She said, whatever she said, you have to, she has to leave it up to the city attorney. That's what she said. That it's my decision and I take that extremely seriously, extremely seriously.
Okay, so that's what she told you. Councilwoman Thomas, what was your understanding of what, uh, the General Counsel is saying?
Well, what my understanding was, is she said that, uh, for us to go back eight months to declare, uh, Zeta as an emergency to do repair, that we will be breaking the law.
That was your interpretation?
Yes.
Alright, Councilman Carmichael.
I, I also spoke with this line after I was told that this might be an issue and I had no issue with it until about four o'clock today. So I called her and asked her and told her specifically what we were doing. And she said, no, that is not right to do, to declare an emergency eight months after an emergency. Because it's not technically an emergency. That's what I was told. So, I, y'all can take a vote, I'll just explain.
Well, let me say this. I want to get this out because the public need to hear the conflicting views. I need to hear the conflicting views. What concerns me in addition to those conflicting views is, and whether you agree or disagree, there have been statements made now publicly from a legal standpoint regarding bid law.
Immediacy.
No, I'm talking about bid law. The word bid law has been tricked, okay? And then there was a discussion back and forth on whether or not this is something that might try to escape or skirt bid law. When you're having that kind of discussion publicly on something, you've got a record. You've got the possibility of being examined by auditors who come in and look at what we do. And if they see, and go back and look at these tapes that we're putting out all over the place. When I think the fact that this is made public and that now I am charged with the responsibility of owning on something and I'm not exactly sure on whether or not this is something that could scare people or could be interpreted by, or a very good lawyer or not so good lawyer could do that and come at the city. That triggers my responsibility to, although I want the stadium to open, but it triggers my responsibility, whether you agree or disagree, to act in the best interest of Selma, Alabama. And it is always my belief that it's in the best interest of Selma, Alabama to not skate the law, but to follow the law. Especially if I'm charged with making the laws. It's tough when you're sitting up here, you've got to make the law and then you're gonna break on something or the possibility and you're not clear. So I'm a little concerned about this. I've got what you said, attorney. I've gotten what two council members have said. And then I've got my own concerns about declaring something an emergency eight months afterwards. And then I've got public dialogue about the possibility that this could be looked at as scathing bid law. Those are red flags for me. It's very difficult for me to make a decision on something when I think it has the slightest hint of an illegality. So that's where I come from. Go ahead, Councilman Randolph.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what's the cost of this project?
About a hundred twenty-five thousand?
No, sir, it's, uh, actually right at a little under a hundred thousand. Uh, I have the, the, I'm right here.
I, I have, I have. You, you, you got more ready? I have, I have. Councilman.
What, what, what's the, uh, deal of for public works?
Fifty. It's a threshold.
It's a threshold, right? So, can we do this in phases? Forty-nine thousand? That's nothing illegal with that.
No, 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 I would, I would suggest you not do that.
Can we table this until we get more clarification on, on the law?
Oh, because we do the motions for.
I, I do want, I do want to, and I, and I appreciate the desire to table, but I think we really need to hammer this up because this is a critical path issue. We just, we, we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it.
That's right.
And, and that's, that's just all, that's all there is to it. I, I agree with you, uh, uh, Council President Young, in terms of issues of skirting the law. But the issue that I'm hearing and what I have heard about this is there was only one provision of the law that was discussed. There was another provision of the law that I questioned whether or not it applied. And, and, and that, and, and that still has not been discussed. What was the other provision? Uh, see, one was the immediacy and the others, and there was a second provision. Uh, Attorney Madison, what was that second provision?
And matter in the pub, affecting public health, safety and general welfare.
Okay, is it a two-prong test where you have to meet both of these or you have to meet all?
My understanding is you have to meet both.
Okay, so that would be. Okay, so that would, I see you got it, yeah. So that's my problem because when you first started talking, I was thinking, if this was an or question and I could err on the side of saying it is a public health issue that those bleachers are missing.
And I explained Thursday night that I didn't have a problem with identifying public health, safety, and general welfare issues involved in this
I got you.
Resolution. But, but the question of immediacy, I even raised in my discussion.
And you were proud, you were correct to, as attorney. With that said, we do have a motion on the floor, Council. We're not gonna stay on this all night. I feel okay with the vote I'm about to do. So with that said, anything else? Anything else? Our Councilwoman Johnson.
Let me change that motion to, I see if we give us a special power, meaning some established.
We already have a motion coming, so if you can't come back, we already have this motion. Let's vote on this motion. Let's vote on this motion. All right. Wrong file, have a problem.
He can withdraw it.
Are you resisting?
He can resist.
On this motion.
He can resist.
You are, so you are withdrawing this motion. All right, with the person that gave the second, is there an objection from, who gave the second? Is there an objection with rescinding the motion?
Rescind the motion. Why, why would we rescind it?
The author of the motion wants to rescind the motion.
Next question.
All right, so the motion is on the floor. We can move on to the next item.
I'll come up with another one.
Best interest. All right. Uh, now, thank you, attorney, for that report. I think that will take care of that item uh on that. Now we're on the new business. Oh, committee reports. Are there any committees I'd like to report at this time? If committed, then I'll report at this time.
Mayor, please discuss this other resolution, please.
Oh, uh, which resolution, Councilwoman Thomas?
The one that, uh, Council.
Okay, the contract. Yeah, we'll bring that up on the new business. We'll bring that up on the new business. Are any other committees I'd like to report? Yes, ma'am. You want to report something?
I, I want to set up a, a committee meeting with the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Committee because there's some, uh, yes, this, this is how I want this to be put up on the building, committee. Uh, I want to talk about liability, safety, risk management. And this falls up under the municipality liability and also the risk management of avoiding and reducing municipality.
Hold on a second. Can someone close the doors, please? Thank you. Continue.
Um, the reason why, um, um, uh, my council members, the reason why I'm talking about this, uh, this is dealing with upon our public building. And uh we have some liabilities and we have some safeties and also we have some risk management. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I want to discuss it under the public building and open to the public. And I have to try to get immediate. Uh, Mayor, could you, uh, give me a date? Uh, will it be next week that you can have a meeting, uh, one day next week with the public building director and me and the committee, uh, next week?
We'll work on the date.
Sir?
We'll work on the date.
Okay, because I, um, um, this is very important. And uh, uh, reason I need this, it needs to be open to the public.
Yes, ma'am.
And uh, that's the, that's under my, it's in also under the
What is, what is the issue of this?
Hey, you want, you want to hear my issue, ma'am?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The issue is liability, safety, and risk, risk under management.
Okay, based on a specific building or all buildings?
I will talk about all buildings.
All buildings?
Yes, sir. That is why I wanted to have the meeting about this because it is important. It's very important.
Okay, thank you. That's mysterious. All right, Councilwoman James.
Uh, yes, oh, um. I'm planning on having a meeting with uh everyone who want to be involved in the youth cleanup on the thirty-first. Uh, I'm parting with Selma High Athletic Department and we're gonna clean. And I tell you, we going in every, we not, we not going everywhere. Y'all can look for, you know, massive. We're gonna get as much as we can uh get done within three to four hours. If you like to help out, if you like to bring young people water, gay, gray, uh, we'll be out there starting immediately at Selma High at six-thirty. Uh, all the athletes from ten, uh, from basketball, baseball, uh, volleyball, football is gonna be helping with this cleanup day. Councilors, if you have an area that we can help you with, please identify and give it to me and we're gonna try our best and get to that get to the area. We're gonna weed it. We're gonna have our zero turns. We're gonna pick up trash. That's gonna be a assignment that our athletic department is working with. Again, we're excited. We're trying to help give back because you all give it to us and at Selma High School, so we'll be giving back. Also, on Saturday, Snow's Cleaning will have a Stop the Vipers, which that is in Ward, four in five. So he, uh, asked me to ask everyone to come out and participate in his phone, two, I think it's from one and four. So please come out and we got speakers coming in because we all need to participate in Stop the Vipers because we all are affected by the virus in town. Again, we're gonna clean up the stadium. We're not gonna be able to do everything, but you will see a difference when our athletes come out and clean up our city. Thank you for all you've done at Selma High, so we give it back to you.
Thank you. All right, and then?
And also, President Young.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we will also be sponsoring your cleanup utensils, your bags, also your pickup stick, and also your, your vest. It is coming from Keen, Alabama Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, is Mr. Martin Neely here? Okay, someone call, okay, I want to hear you just say the question.
What to thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, uh, you'll never get a chance to announce him or run through. Uh, I, I understand we're in the process of trying some lighting, put on a bridge. Uh, is that where you can contact the state about that bridge? Need to be recharged, repaint again. Is they plan on painting anytime soon? Just looking to that, being got asked, now just looking to it perfectly. Uh, also, uh, you know, I got several calls from elder people by fireworks and I try to be real with them and let them know they gonna hear about us because as long as they sell it fireworks, you ain't gonna stop them. We don't have the manpower to do that. And uh, I don't know what's in there to do about that, but I know there's a lot of fireworks when fireworks went out, a lot of guns start coming around, gunfire. So, but uh, uh, but like I was trying to tell the gentleman, you know, that as long as we got setups to sell fireworks, they not gonna stop shooting. But uh, but just looking to that, the new issue, if you don't mind, and I appreciate, and then last thing was for us to uh, we had two things on agenda, uh, contracts. One of them is about the landfill management and the uh, uh, um, this love out there about, about the contract.
That was the one where I asked if we could divide it into three different.
Okay, this one, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome, okay.
Okay, now, thank you. The next, uh, we're coming to public safety. And I guess I can bring this one up, about the contract that was removed from the consent agenda because it came out of the public safety committee. Uh, and that was the item to approve a contract for services with NPG LLC for consulting services as community liaison and amount of thirty thousand dollars, starting July fifteenth through January thirty-first, twenty forty-two, with funding being dispersed from non-appropriate accounts. And so, uh, I think that's one we can discuss. I think, Council Johnson, you's the one that questioned it.
And, and the reason why, uh, uh, that's one of my favorite officer, uh, awesome officer, but my problem is what that is. Uh, and caught off guard in work session when the mayor said that he didn't have some input in it. And I would think that we should at least fly and pass the input into the, into the contract, you know. Um, and also, Mayor, in the past, you know, we've had a thing called trust bill. Uh, and that was something, deal with something similar to what we got going on, that, this, this contract. Is that something you plan to put in this, uh, budget here? Okay, okay. Um, and I always thought that all contracts would go through the mayor because, you know, and I thought it was been a lot more right if the mayor would at least have a hand on, in, in that. And, and I understand he said that Mr. President, you didn't acknowledge it all about this, this situation here. And I just got a problem with that. I think that, you know, everything that we do, I thought with unity, we should work together. And right now, I understand that it wasn't on unity that, that's something that we come up with down to the mayor and put in, and I don't think that's right on that part of it.
Uh, and Councilman Johnson, uh, you definitely had the right to remove that item, uh, from consent agenda as any council member, when they don't approve something, they have that right. So I agree with you about your right to remove it. Uh, but I respectfully, uh, disagree with you about, uh, having to go, uh, to the executive branch uh, for this particular matter. Uh, this matter was first discussed in a public safety meeting. Uh, an, an open public safety meeting. Everyone was allowed to come who wanted to come. And it was discussed, um, and Mr. Neely invented to the public. Uh, we have those recordings. And then we held over, after that presentation, we held it for another public safety committee meeting uh, where it could be further discussed if anyone wanted. And out of the public safety committee, the recommendation came from the committee to recommend this to the full council. So, while I understand, uh, you know, having the mayor involved on things, it was not required to have the mayor involved on this, just as the mayor has done many things and has not involved the council. So, and that's fine. I have no disagreement with that. Uh, whatever the executive branch has in thought we should do, they should be able to do it, just as the legislative branch. And the legislative branch probably took this matter through the committee. The committee recommended, had another meeting, and then we brought to the work session, and then we brought it for the whole council to go. So I understand where you're coming from, but I disagree, uh, with you that this matter could be brought before the council for its approval and ratification. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, um, that being said, I am on that committee and I was in agreement with this, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept this contract for ser, for services with, um, NPG LLC for consulting services.
It's very sad.
How sad?
It was moved by Councilwoman Kristi Thomas and promptly seconded by Councilwoman Janet Thomas to approve the contract with NPG LLC Consulting Services. Are we ready for the question? Yes, Mayor?
Since I was mentioned in the discussion, I respond. Uh, as mayor, I have never reached into legislative branch functions and tried to execute your job. Never have. Um, I did share with the council and the public that I was considering including the community outreach initiative and trust bill in next year's budget. I've said that that function does a lot of the things that are being proposed in this contract. As I sat through and listened in the meetings, never once was I asked my opinion to be shared. In fact, it was clear with the conversation going directly to the chief, assistant chief, everybody else. But you did not want my opinion about this, and I didn't superimpose it. I'd rather be axed up and axed down in those discussions. And so that's why, you know, at the end of the day, I think this is a duplication of effort. I have, I have nothing against Mr. Neely. I think he has a brilliant idea and concept, but it does represent a duplication of services in the budget proposal that you would get between now and the next work session. Uh, if the council is interested in understanding the difference in the services that could be provided through community outreach and what Mr. Neely is proposing, then I would advocate for you to defer this vote until such time you have an opportunity to look at it. In the meantime, if you choose to move forward without that information, uh, you do have that right. But, Mr. President, remember, at the end of the day, whatever contract you approve has to be managed by the executive branch. And we've had nothing to do or say about this contract.
Fully understood, Mayor. And within the confines of the contract, you will see that there are provisions that allow either party to separate itself from the contractual agreement as long as the thirty days notice is given. So we understand, we're just talking about today, about the possibility of having community outreach included in your budget. And that's really nice to hear. But I think what the public safety committee realized was the urgency of this situation. Our budget is not gonna be approved for another couple of months. But meanwhile, we need to start handling some issues now. We need Mr. Neely working now. And the committee listened to that and decided to make this recommendation. And if, when that recommendation comes from the mayor about having other community related services, we can consider those things. But the committee listened to Mr. Neely and came up with this recommendation now. And let me remind, a motion is on the floor.
Uh, the issue of urgency to serve the community is the exact same one I advocated for the repair of the stadium. And so I do understand that, but I would like to clarify, uh, based on my interpretation of this contract, this is not a thirty thousand dollar agreement. It's a sixty thousand dollar agreement. That's all I have.
A complete interpretation of the contract will yield that it is a thirty thousand dollar contract with parties, if they agree, then it can go to sixty thousand dollars. But they must agree, they must get thirty days' notice. So if they all dispossess, it is a thirty thousand dollar contract with the possibility in both parties to agree before it becomes sixty thousand dollars. A motion is on the floor. With that, a red, Councilwoman.
Is, is this something, I mean, I understand that, that trust bill, and I don't know much of anything about that. But it's, I understand you're gonna be bringing more to us for the budget. And, and that was, uh, you know, if that goes through that process, we, we start knowing it on October first. Uh, is there some way, I mean, this can, can mow into that? I mean, can they not work together? I mean, this is, um, you know, three, three months going in. It seems like we could get some things started and possibly work hand in hand with the trust bill on October one. I mean, I, I don't wanna, um, you know, I'm just prepared.
I think that's excellent. And as the mayor really pointed out, the executive branch is responsible for supervising this contract. And so I think that that's an excellent suggestion and hopefully that will be taken into consideration. Go ahead, Councilwoman Jane Thomas.
Yeah, well, I, I would like to share this with the body of the council. I know everybody received an email with the problems that we are having in our city today, all over Alabama. Even Stephen Marshall said something about this in the program, getting to build the community up. He sent us an email. Each councilperson got this email. And we indirectly say that when we get our funds, he precipitated, addressed this to Al, it came from the Alabama Association of the County Commission. And it came from the Alabama League of the Municipality. It said, dear commissioners and dear councilmen, with the climate and the value that we have on in our community, that programs like we as a part of the public safety committee that came before this body of the council, it could run into consecutive that came before this body of the council, it could run into a consecration with the other program. We are trying to do something to help the community at this time, is, 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 this is the body of the le- legislative body to make this decision, to improve public safety, to build a relationship in the community."
Yes, ma'am.
And this is what we are trying to do. We are not trying to, overall, we are trying to do something in this, in our community.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. With that said, roll call, Madam Clerk.
President, y'all?
I am voting yes, because I am voting because of public safety. Public safety is the number one issue facing Selma right now, and I voted for this community liaison contract because this is a vote for public safety, and I may say it's mine.
Councilwoman Carville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane, suspend?
I'm staying because, uh, the reason I'm staying is, as I look closer into it, yes, it's a good project, yes, uh, if we, but if you look at it, if you look at the total amount, we have some police officers who do not make this amount of money. So we need to look very clear into what we do. It's a great project, it's a great project. I have no problem with the project, but I look real clear, so that is my decision.
I'm staying.
I'm staying, yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
No.
Councilwoman Jimmerson?
No.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
No.
Madam Clerk, will you please read back the results of the vote?
Yes, uh, we have three affirmative, four no. I'm sorry, four affirmative, three no, and one extension.
Okay, so the vote was then reaffirmed, four votes, alright. Thank you, Council, for your votes. Alright, what else do we have to work on tonight? Um, one of the items that I think we need to go to is the Selma Civilian Review Board, and what I would ask, uh, at this time is for the council to consider placing that on first read, uh, for our next meeting. Uh, that's the Selma Civilian Review Board. We talked about it in our Public Safety Committee, and we also talked about it in our work session. So at this time, council, is there a motion to place the Selma Civilian Review Board on first read?
So good.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, so we moved and promptly seconded it to place, um, the item of discussion of the Selma Civilian Review Board on first read. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President, y'all?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, for your votes on the creation of the Selma Civilian Review Board. This also is a public safety vote, as we have had police complaints, and from time to time, those matters be very intense, but this too is, uh, trying our best to extend ourselves out to the community to know that they do have some involvement. So thank you all, council, for your vote to places on first read, and at our next meeting, we will vote it up again. Thank you so much. Um, that's, I believe we have another item under public safety. Um, go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas, you had something?
I know, I was gonna say, I was gonna mention public works in the committee.
Okay, um, another item under the public safety, I, I know that committee recommended to determine what we're gonna do about the security cameras, but I still don't think we have all the information that we need, correct?
I, I sent, I actually sent it out there quite before the meeting.
Okay.
Hey, like, like.
Yeah, but really, uh, can we have an opportunity to look at that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So, council, we will, our next work session, take up those cameras, and we can ask all the questions that we need, because we have all the information that we need to look at those two competing proposals. We may vote on one, we may vote it down, but we'll have an opportunity, uh, to look at it. Uh, I believe that's all items that we have right now under public safety, but again, and I'm gonna keep saying, go ahead, go ahead, any councilwoman, Thomas?
I just wanted to, since we're talking about public safety.
Yes, sir.
We, um, we're talking about some budget numbers on increase in SPD, and I know there was a, a plan that was presented, um, to the mayor by Assistant Chief McCallum, and I didn't know if that was something that we were gonna get soon, or if that's something that you're gonna do with Auburn GDI and try to get that completed with them, or, uh, what, what's the plan there? I know, this is a situation, we may, uh, just, uh, hold our own.
Assistant Chief Hunter and I discussed that today. Uh, we are calculating the total financial impact for the next fiscal year, so that that number can be included in the budget, uh, and then that plan would then be forwarded to, uh, to Auburn folks, so that they could, let it move forward with it. But we need to do that for both fire and police, both have pay plans, and we, uh, have critical needs in both areas. Uh, so that's, hopefully I answered the question.
You did, I, I appreciate it. I, I just, I was kinda hoping, uh, that maybe we could get some numbers crushed a little bit early, uh, because of the dire need in the police department. Even, I mean, I know we gotta do a plan, we didn't get the pay increase in this last budget, but I'm just wondering if we can get something to, to help save that, and it, again, the department head, the chief and assistant chief advise against it. I understand, I'm just, I'm just curious about something that we can look at doing, uh, in order to save what we get what we're dealing with.
If no one is against a pay increase, uh, the question is, how is it to be applied? Uh, and so that's being worked on, I think we've pretty much come up with a resolve for that, uh, but there are some things, there are some things you are gonna have to do as a body to vote on in order for those things to happen, uh, and we'll be bringing those things to you when we bring the complaint.
Okay.
Uh, Council President, just one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just want to acknowledge that I never did receive a copy of the Citizens Advisory Review Board document.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I never did receive it, and so my question, again, my question here is, does that document provide that board with subpoena power?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, um, anything with public safety? I'm gonna finish you up. Finish it up with the public safety issues. Uh, uh, yes.
Yes, this, this, this is important, the public safety. Also, it was recommended to us that, um, that we look at with the American Rescue Plan Act, that our first responders, like the police officer, the DNI, that we look at, the salary, the everything else. Rescue Plan Act, our first responders, like the police officer, the DNI, that we look
Now you know how to answer a question, Councilwoman Thomas.
It was asked of us, as the, uh, the legislative body, to please take this, uh, include, they are asking us to look at this, because, uh, our police officer, they're, uh, representing our city, they are the one that we need to look at, giving them all the things that they need, including the fire department. Uh, they were talking about the one point seven million dollars that, billion dollars that's coming to the city of Selma, and by we being the government body over the finance and talking about what we really need with all the crimes and all of the, the violence that we have, they are asking us to recommend, to look deeply into the public safety, making sure that our first responder, the police officer, get the salary and everything that they need, and also the community to get what they need.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, you have something, Mayor?
Keep calling, O'Malley. Um, I would just like to add one more point to Councilwoman Thomas's statement, and that is, if you know something, say something. We need to get past this no snitching thing. A lot of people know what's going on in town, and, uh, a lot of people who are in authority know what's going on, family members know what's happening, what's gonna happen before it happens. I'm just saying, we really need to get past that and start telling what we know, because I don't care how many police officers we have, if the citizens don't get engaged and begin to share information with law enforcement, we gotta start trusting somebody. And we don't start trusting them and sharing information so that we can be proactive, then we're not gonna get a handle on this.
Thank you. Um, yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to say something, what was Thomas saying about the salary? Um, but, but, now, we, if we did a, like a bonus raise, something, one, you say one, you can't say it, but we can't do a salary with that money, because we got to be able to sustain it, uh, because if we start paying the pay increase with this one point seven, and all of a sudden that money run out, right now, we gonna have to find some more funding to come in to be able to hire in eighties and, uh, police officers anyway, uh, because I think we got something wanted to do that has to, uh, split it, but what I'm basically saying, and Attorney General was up with it, she said that, you know, you can, you don't use that money, come out salaries, you know, you may wanna do a bonus, uh, one-time raise, whatever, if we use that, but anyway, because, again, like I said, uh, you gotta be able to maintain that salary, uh, so, um, so in all words, we're gonna do the one-time raise, if we did that, it's dollars.
And also, they asked us to match, he also, uh, Stephen Marshall also asked the city to match, to match some of the, the salary with this one point meeting, and we're going in our budget, they also asked us to match to, the city to match.
Okay, Attorney General.
Thanks to Councilwoman Thomas, I received an, an email, uh, that information about the American Rescue, uh, Plan Act, and I, there were two emails, I've read one of them completely, the other one I'm still poring over, I think I responded to you to that effect earlier today, or yesterday, and the guidelines are in the legislation. The Attorney General's office offered, uh, our suggestion, is well intended, but the guidelines are in the legislation, and, uh, I'm doing due diligence on reading that, that legislation now. Um, whatever the council decides is up to the council, but I'll be more than happy to bring you what the guidelines say about how money can be spent.
Thank you. Um, there's been a lot said about the American Rescue Plan proceeds. We have the meeting scheduled on the twentieth, July the twentieth, I think, I don't know what day of the week that falls off, but, um, that's a week from today, so next Tuesday, we've got the American Rescue Plans money meeting, and we'll be speaking with, um, Department Head, Wood, uh, about our plan. If you read today's paper, you will see where, um, the county, uh, was told we gotta get a plan there. Well, they gotta get a plan together for their money, and we have to get a plan together for ours.
And, and Mr. President, I would just recommend that the mayor's input be solved, not just the department head.
Yes, that's, there is no objection to that.
What, uh, what do you want?
Um, we'll get the timeout, 'cause I think that one's, I don't wanna mispoke, but I think that means at five, but I wanna make sure before I, 'cause we have two meetings given like that, so I think it's at five o'clock. Uh, so, there's been a lot said about police officers. Uh, over in Montgomery, they recently gave their officers a raise. Uh, let's be very clear, if you're gonna have police, you're going to be paid for them, and if you're selling out of them, and you're paying a very, very low wage, and you're competing with other police departments, you're gonna be at a deficit, and you're not gonna have the police that you need. Whatever we do, and I, I, I'm gonna keep saying these things, I want them to stay, go into Walmart, sit on your porch, sit in your house, all depends on your public safety. If right now, we don't have what we need, we gotta take care of the police that we have, and we've got to grow the department. So I'm hoping that President Biden said, use these funds for public safety, buy our clients. Buy our clients, not just on the rise and sell, it's all over the country. So we're gonna have to be as creative as possible, and while we know that the money might run out, we gotta live in the now, we've got to be able to take care of this violent problem we have now. We must fund our police department adequately to get adequate protection. That concludes the public safety report. Well, now, uh, Public Works, did you have anything, Councilwoman Thomas?
Just, just to comment.
Okay.
Thank you to the mayor, and the exact rest of the department heads that are inside of all that are in the initiative, uh, we got that, the documents, and I, I look forward to having a Public Works Committee meeting, Councilman Johnson. Uh, and, uh, and I, I, I just wanna ask the council, um, it's a lot of, it's a lot of reading, so, so, and we gotta go, we gotta discuss this in a meeting, so everybody needs to have read it before we discuss it, and read it well, so how, how much time do y'all need before I call this Public Works Committee meeting? A week, ten days?
I think next week, I know we got at least three separate meetings, maybe four, so maybe the next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll go, I'll go two weeks then.
Okay, 'cause next week, I know, I know of at least three meetings, and I just asked Councilwoman Thomas about the mixture, so, I don't know when that's gonna be scheduled, so.
Okay.
The next week.
I'll, I'll get with the mayor and make sure we can speak to that the following week.
Yes, okay. Thank you for your Public Works, uh, any other committees, any other committees? Finance Committee is also meeting on the twentieth at six o'clock. Council, is that correct? Council Secretary? But, so, thank yous, alright. So, five o'clock is the Finance Committee meeting, and then the American Rescue Plan meeting at six. Thank you, thank you, thank you, alright. Uh, any other committees need to report? You, you, what you want to?
I don't have a committee report, I have a question to the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, can you tell us, uh, right now, with, uh, interim trade to retire, who do we have in the, uh, trade to, in the office now, uh, as trade?
You don't have one. That's your appointment?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have a question, it'd be nice to ask you. Because we didn't get a report, we not get to do that. Reason why I ask you, I'm not being funny, and I'm not being sarcastic.
Well, well, here, here's the point, uh, when I walked in the door, Ms. Oliver sat here and told all of us she was gonna leave here in June. She told all of us that. The council has made it clear initially, Councilwoman Thomas, with due respect, and I appreciate you drafting a document to include the mayor, but initially, this council made clear that you didn't want the mayor involved in that. You did, and so I hadn't touched it. I haven't. I hadn't touched it.
Yes, sir.
And, and, uh, you know, and so, don't, don't, I, I just wanna make sure that the Councilwoman's comments, uh, don't ultimately cast some disparaging reflection on administration, because you told us to leave it alone.
Got you, ma'am.
Alright.
Alright.
Can I finish? The reason why I ask, because, uh, the reason why I ask is that, right now, when things got to be, uh, signed and to get information on, uh, where we at, have we received our American Rescue, that font check, has it came in, uh?
We're, we're still functioning as a government. We're still functioning as a government.
I'm saying, I'm saying functioning as a government, but, uh, I'm asking as, uh, a citizen and a councilperson, because, uh, you say, uh, we have someone that retired, and they, they operation has to fall, and things have to be signed, and that is my question, it'd be nice to ask you, but, but, it's me, ma'am.
Well, now, okay, I was trying to ask you a question.
Let me finish, I have to.
Okay, because you go ahead and finish, Councilwoman.
Okay, let me finish, then you can ask. Let me finish, you need to answer for me. I have this right. The reason why I asked you that is because we haven't got any response before our treasurer left. She didn't, she didn't respond any, nothing to the body of the council. When she left, she left on the last of that month. And we have been asking when the American Rescue Fund got in, is it coming in, has it came in? Because some other parts of Alabama have received, so that's why I just asked.
But to my knowledge, we have not received a check yet.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Question, okay. Councilwoman Carmichael, did you have anything?
It was mentioned about the, about BMSS covering that spot in the work session. And it's a costly deal, but it's the, it's a treasurer's spot. So, I mean, I don't know if we need to.
Let's, since Councilwoman Harville isn't here, and he has all the information, let's take this up a discussion in Finance Committee on two. So you hear me? Okay, any other committees need to report, alright? Alright, any other new or unfinished business? I was trying to keep a list of all the business. We took care of a lot of it in committee, so committees are working, they are working. Any other items for new or unfinished business? Yes, sir.
In the meeting, work session, I mentioned that that we need to provide the oil lease money.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to make a motion that we provide the oil lease money in nine ways.
Is there a second? Uh, there's ten ways.
No, I haven't, ma'am. But it's ten, wait.
Nine plus one, yeah.
Okay. Ten, I'm sorry. I know I hit a vote, but I sure hope you don't do that.
Alright, it was moved by Councilwoman Randolph, and I think it was seconded by Councilwoman James. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, it was moved by Councilwoman Randolph, and seconded by Councilwoman Ms. James to separate the oil lease funds to all councilmen with respect to the mayor. Are we ready for discussion?
I will share my reason for not wanting you to do it. When you do that, you create small pots of money, and you can't really get much done. You leave a larger pot of money, you can actually tackle the project that affects the city, but that's, that's your call. I don't hit a vote, but that's my reason.
Yes, sir, ma'am, thank you. Alright, thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Councilwoman Carmichael.
I'd like to say that I agree that we need to put that money together when the time is right. If you bring us something, then I'll thank you.
But the wards need stuff done now, so we are liking, can I say?
We're gonna make a free vote.
Oh, never forget to him. A lot of our wards are liking stuff done now. We don't have the, in our community, where we have these high crimes at, we're not getting these areas, getting in there to get this taken care of. And then, in some of the locations where the oil lease can fix some spot or cave in, besides the whole city, and our neighborhood got barriers in the village street, some of this stuff can work. We waiting to put one pool of money in for one ward, and we wait the next year, we gonna be looking like the same way to the next five years, to the next election. So, something that can do, so we gotta serve our constituents.
Councilwoman, we have fixed more pockets and caves in in eight months than you did in eight years.
I didn't say you didn't fix it.
I'm just saying, that's the truth.
I did, I did.
That's the truth.
We have motion for, with that, roll call, Madam Clerk.
President, y'all.
On this one. I'm just going back to my memory. And we were at one of the work sessions on Zoom. And we talked about trying to take care of some big problems. And big problems can't be taken care of separately. They require all of us. I agree with Madam Perkins. My vote is no.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes, because we can always vote back, yeah.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, until we still get a plan.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes, my favorite.
Alright, can you read back the results of the vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have seven affirmative and one no.
One no. We have Perkins.
We are together.
We are together. Alright, with that said, is there any other business that needs to be discussed by this council? Call announcements, go ahead.
We're having pre-vetization in Warren too, August 13th, that's gonna be, I'm sorry, July 16th, that's Friday, from 1:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. And also, I just wanted to, I thought a representative from the WIL was gonna be here. The Michael Johnson Foundation is having a family and fun day and back-to-school giveaway on June 24th, from 11:00 to 4:00 P.M. in the WILCA.
Alright, any other announcements, briefly?
I don't have a announcement, I have one question to ask our president. Can you let the citizens know at what area that Mr. Neely will be in all wars, working and setting up a neighborhood association, because they might not know that.
Yeah, Mr. Neely will be working with each one of the wards slash districts. And he'll be setting up neighborhood watch programs for each one. And also, it'll be citywide, because he'll be working with me as well. And so he's going to get with us upon the date of the start of his contract. He's going to get with us, and we'll talk about some of the needs of our various wards, because some of our wards might be able to pick it from others, and we may have specific needs, so we will be working that out with you. Alright, Councilwoman Carmichael?
I just want to say one thing, that I hate we didn't get that passed for the stadium, I was in full support of the public prior to today, and prior to this afternoon. And I'm sorry, but when I realized what happened, I knew I should not have known of that. So I just want you to know that I'm in full support, and like I said publicly before, I do appreciate everything we do in there, and you seem to be doing a good job.
Go ahead. Come on, that was not a question.
I want to say, piggyback on what Councilwoman Carmichael said. The reason why it is, is, I know, is because they realized that football is not an emergency. So, that's part of why they told them never.
Come on, excuse, come on.
So I just wanted to, because I'm like, you know, I'm like crazy that this didn't get passed, but to hear that is because football is not considered an emergency.
We're gonna need the public to refrain from comments while the councilperson is speaking, as we will decide. Continue, Councilwoman James.
So I'm praying that we come up with some other kind of solution, because we really need that stadium up, working, because our kids need a place to play ball. I consider football an emergency, to me, that's me.
Alright, Councilwoman Thomas?
This is asking, I need to tell the council members that last year during COVID, you know, the sister has come in, be in August, and you know that we have to go to Montgomery for each district to check out how many people we lost, in what zone, what we're gonna have to do. So I just want the council member to be prepared. Rob Johnson is gonna schedule us a day for all of us to go to Montgomery to look at the map, to look at our zoning, of how many people we have lost in our district, some of us might have to take some over. So be prepared, we're working on that.
That's a mission for the council. With that said, there'll be no further business in Selma City Council. This being stands adjourned. Thank you very much.